Good evening. Welcome to this evening's planning board meeting. This is the meeting for October 30th, 2019. My name is Pete Pecos and I'd like to introduce our board members to my left.
Larry Murphy.
Leslie Matthews.
George Morris.
Martha Taylor, Town Planner.
And Brian Winner, Town Council's Office.
All right. Our agenda tonight is somewhat full, so we're going to be starting early. And our first order of business will be an appearance by Alan D'Angelo, 78 Allen Street, requesting to replace exterior siding and trim property subject to a preservation restriction. Run up if you want to stand by our microphone. State your meeting address.
Always.
So again, the microphone isn't broadcasting in the room.
It's picking it up for our TV system, so please speak loudly and introduce yourself.
Alan D'Angelo, 78 Allen Street. We've been there since 2006, and we've been in front of the planning board before, so I'm well aware of the restriction. We've been dealing with the condition of the home since we moved in. The letter details exactly what the issues were, but it's been overrun with rodents of animals and hives in the walls. We've had a number of really awful experiences over the last few years. And it's a cost of fortune to heat the house to the point that at one point we tried to sell it because we couldn't afford it. The house is pretty much broken. This year, we sold the property and we were able to put some money back into the house. So we have, knowing about the restriction, we hired Justin Kelly Contracting to do the exterior work. He went down to the building inspector. He was informed about the restriction. He brought the restriction up to Sam Jocelyn. Sam looked in his computer, didn't see the restriction, so we issued a building permit. And the request for the building, the application for the building permit said what materials we wanted to use, which is hardy board siding and PVC trim. Which when we were talking about the project, when it started, we had suggested that we put wood siding up. And Justin's recommendation was that this siding has the same exact profile, the same exact look, with better lifespan, doesn't rot, better insulated properties, and it's half of it. So, three days, four days after the application was in?
You got through, yeah.
So the building permit was approved, and we were surprised that we didn't have to go in front of the planning board. So we did a little check to make sure that it said the hardy board siding, so we just went ahead with the work. And after a couple of days of the removal, and the removal took a couple of days, someone came to the door and said we have to stop. So, all we're asking, I mean, we've put a lot into that house. We've done everything we could do. We've done everything the right way. We bought the house because we love old houses. We would never do anything that would diminish the value of the house. It's going to look better than it did before. The condition of the siding when we moved in was horrific. It was bowed in places, water got in, animals could get in. I mean, we had a groundhog on the second floor of the house. Not to mention, the first weekend we were there, in November, the house froze solid with the heat on, 40 degrees on the first floor. And two years ago, another full freeze-up flooded the first floor completely, and we've been without a kitchen since then. So, all we're asking is to just allow us to finish what we started. Already, the house is already insulated because that's how far it got before we were told to stop. The heat hasn't come on in a week. So it's working, and it's going to look great. So, Justin is prepared to speak on the hardy board siding. He has restoration experience, does a lot of work in Cambridge, he's done work for Harvard. He actually won a presentation award in 2018?
Uh, 16 or something, I don't remember.
For work that he did for Harvard University. So he's prepared to speak if you have questions for him on the look, the feel, the profile. Let me... Anything else? I don't have anything else. I mean, everything's in here. There are pictures of what we're proposing, so this is something that was already done before we were told to stop. And then there's pictures of the condition of the siding. I mean, I think a lot of the issue, this is where, I mean, animals could just get in there. We've seen flying squirrels come out of there. But, I mean, everything is in here. This is the condition of the existing sill. If you could actually stick your finger almost all the way through, it was so soft. There's a close-up of the same sill. I mean, everything, and that one just falls off in chunks. So everything, I think, reading through the restriction, since this has all come up, I haven't looked at it for probably 10 years, I think the issue is with the original renovation. I mean, it says in the restriction it's going to rehabilitate the exterior of the house. Didn't happen. Didn't happen. They took the asbestos shingles off, or whatever it was, and painted it. I mean, we could have painted it, we could have kept the material there and painted it. It wouldn't have done anything for us. It might have looked nice from the street, but it's not going to look as good as it would if you allow us to finish what we started. I have nothing further to say. If you have questions for Justin on the products?
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate the love and desire to maintain an old home. We do have a lot of charming old homes in this town. But what I think I need to do is I just need to have the board appreciate where we are with this situation. So we're basically dealing with a preservation restriction, and that's why this discussion is taking place with all this board. So I think what I'd like to do, since I think many of the board members weren't involved in 2006, I want to turn to council, just to help us understand what a preservation restriction is, what our obligation is to that restriction, how we go forward in the situation like this.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, again, for being so new for me. Brian Winner. So, let me just start maybe from sort of a basic premises, because this isn't just a preservation restriction in a vacuum. There was also relief granted in this site. In the preservation restriction, as I understand, it came about as a condition of that original relief. So it's also part of, if you will, kind of the tapestry of his zoning for this site. So, think about it also in terms of a condition of the relief that allowed this project to go forward in the first place. So like any other condition of relief that this board grants, it becomes part of the law of the site, the zoning of the site. So that all happened and transpired, you know, before this board was involved in this latest round, obviously, by many, many years. So what came about as a result of that was this preservation restriction. It was accepted by the selectmen on behalf of the town, and it names the planning board as the beneficiary and sort of the holder of that. So this board becomes the enforcing agent, and in essence, the monitoring agent of that preservation restriction. And just in general, a preservation restriction does what it pleases, it's to preserve, you know, the aesthetic quality, the historical quality of the property, in just sort of general layman's terms. Now, the board's obligation under the preservation restriction is really, this is where it gets different. It's different than the sort of discretionary zoning relief maybe you're more accustomed to. Under paragraph three of the restriction, the board's obligation is very limited. So it's not a situation where you think about granting waivers or some flexibility in terms of design parameters. The board's obligation is spelled out very clearly that it's to review a proposal for consistency with the intent and purposes of that restriction. And the restriction spells out, going back to paragraph one, what that standard is, and it's the Secretary of the Interior Standards for Treatment of Historical Properties Guidelines for Preserving, Rehabilitating, Restoring, and Reconstructing Historic Buildings. And there's a federal code of regulations citation for that. So the board's job is not to look at sort of the ownership history of the property or what's transpired in the past. It's simply to determine whether or not the proposal meets that standard, not whether it's, if that patient work is necessary, or a good idea, bad idea. So it's a really contained scope of review, and that's the only thing the board really needs to look at. So I understand, I heard the presentation, just as you all did, in terms of the history and how we got to this point, and I don't mean to be dismissive or disrespectful of any of that whatsoever, but I would just caution the board to really focus on the limited jurisdiction that the board does have over this, and it is limited. It's just a review for consistency, nothing else. So we haven't heard yet from the representatives of the applicant at this point in terms of what that proposal is. You had it in the package here, but that's really what I would focus the board on, is what work is going to be done, what does it consist of, what are the parameters of that, what's the intent of it, what's going to be the end result, and whether or not that's consistent.
So, Martha, just so, I understand what the restrictions are by the Secretary. Could you just help us, help the board, understand what those defined restrictions are?
I'll try. At the end of the first part of your packets, there is an extract from the Secretary of the Interior Standards. And basically, these will be the standards for rehabilitation as opposed to preservation. And Standard Six, basically, is the one that I've been advised is the one that applies. Deteriorated historic features will be repaired rather than replaced. Where the severity of deterioration requires replacement of a distinct feature, the new feature will match the old, the design color, texture, and the possible materials. Replacement of missing features will be substantiated by documentary and physical evidence. And so, you know, reading through the standards, basically, the intent is to replace materials with like materials. So wood with wood, or if you have sown, it's sown, stone. And there are, you know, further recommendations in here. You know, ideally, wood would be repaired by patching, splicing, consolidating, or otherwise reinforcing the wood using conservation methods. If it needs to be replaced, it would be replacing in kind an entire wood feature that's too deteriorated to repair. And the significant concern is on elevations, the primary elevation or other highly visible elevations.
So we understand that our role here is to follow a standard that we have not established and someone else has established. And part of the preservation restriction guides us to follow this path. Now, understanding that that's what our role here, and that's what we're supposed to be doing, is following this standard, and understanding what Martha has explained is the standard, I'd welcome you to kind of come to the microphone.
Oh, yes.
Identify yourself, and then I'd ask you how you would achieve the standard that Martha has described.
Sure. Justin Kelly, Justin Kelly Contracting. This is a pretty common question, and when you read the guidelines, when you read the secretary, it says replace in kind. These are direct replacements in kind, matching the exact profile, matching the exact wood. Once painted, you can't tell the difference. So it's become a standard in preservation for places that are prone to rot, should start using more advanced materials. You say replace in kind, it's doing just that. It's not changing material to a metal or something that is poorly depicts like vinyl siding, poorly depicts that it'd be a poor attempt at matching the existing siding. But matching the exact same forged profile, we're doing an excellent job at it. And basically getting to the intent of why that guideline is there. That guideline is not law. It's a guideline to help boards such as yourselves to achieve keeping the character of these old homes. And pretty much any storefront, any building really. It's very, very general in the guideline. It tells us how to do that so that you match the right profiles, that the original trim at five and a half inches is matched, that we don't try to use a three and a half inch standard cases from Home Depot, that we're matching the details exactly. They've recreated all these materials to match these old, so that the same fan molding that goes around the windows can match the original fan molding that was put in 200 years ago. It's the same exact profile for doing just this. And when it says in kind, that's what it means. We've created these to replace these older materials. Then there's also an imitative section of the guidelines that says how often it is replaced with faux products to look like the same. Martha, did you come across that?
I've seen that, although that seemed to be more for historical applications. One thing that I do see here, and it's on page 91, is smooth surface cementitious siding may be used to replace deteriorated wood siding only on secondary elevations that have minimal visibility. And cementitious siding with a raised wood grain texture is not an appropriate material to replace historic wood siding, which has a smooth texture when painted. I haven't seen the...
We use the smooth. Yeah, the wood grain one looks pretty awful.
I thought I saw something else in here, too. I'm trying to find it right now, regarding cementitious materials.
Do board members have questions at this time, from a contractor standpoint, with the materials?
We documented all the details to make sure that we're able to match them, all the doorways, all the window trim, all of that is documented in photos, so that we replicate it exactly.
So is this material created specifically for this job?
I mean, it's a general, it's a wide design. So it was purchased specifically for this job. It's on the site, it's already been paid for, it's sitting there. Some of it was installed before we got the stoppage order. Most of the windows are done on the first floor, but we haven't put any siding up yet.
So, I hate going backwards in situations, because you can't, you know, you can't go backwards, you just can't go forward. But I think the learning point for us here, and why we're here now, is part of the restriction requires that the planning board be notified of what's to take place, and there's a 30-day opportunity to review things. That didn't happen. We have a contractor who's telling us that this material is, could be suitable for this type of an application. I don't know if that is the case. And I don't know if we can make a determination tonight if that's the case. We'd probably have to do some research and contact the secretary's office to see, hey, are you comfortable with this? What is your recommendation with your guidance? So that we've, we're sure that we're following what we need to follow.
Once again, that is just guidance. That it's not meant to be law or canon. It's supposed to be a guideline for boards to make their own judgment calls.
And I think, you know, given the fact that this has kind of dropped on us, I think we need some time to do a little bit of homework on our end, which would have been ideal in a 30-day window to do this.
Can I just speak to that from the process?
Hold on, one second. And that would allow us to then make sure that what you're telling us is appropriate to what the secretary's standard guidelines are, so that we can say this in doing our job. I didn't mean to cut you off.
That's okay.
On the respect, but the foreword's out of my head. Does that make sense?
It does, and I understand exactly where you're coming from. Time is of the essence for us, obviously, just to winterize. And I apologize that we're even here. Normally, when I call and get a building permit, and especially when I bring up the historical commission, it gets flagged immediately, where I can't even get the permit, and would never do work with those permits. So I really thought I was, you know, doing everything right, but...
And this is a known year. The property owner knew what the pathway was, because it was kind of laid out as part of what their agreement was when they took this property, when they sued this property. And again, we went around in 2006, and we were all part of that. So here we are now, trying to negotiate how we go forward in a timely manner to address everything.
Okay.
And I think you want to...
Yeah, I just want to explain what the process. So when Justin went to see Sam Jocelyn, knowing about the restriction, we were informed by the building inspector that the board didn't have jurisdiction over this particular permit, and that's why we went and did the work. We had fully expected to wait the 30 days. We expected to have to go to a hearing before we did anything. But when he issued the building permit, that's when we went and did the work. So having a subsequent conversation with Sam Jocelyn, he said that normally, just as Justin said, when there's a restriction, it's flagged in his computer. So he, when he put in the application, he wasn't tipped off that there was a... And there's a bylaw in the town that any home younger than 1830, or 1829, I think he said, doesn't need approval. And the assessor's office has it as an 1830. So, knowing all that, that's why we went ahead with the work. I mean, we wouldn't have done it otherwise, and the cost of the project using these materials is what made it feasible, otherwise not feasible.
I can appreciate what you're saying, and I can also appreciate how this is historically recorded as an agreement to how things are supposed to be done in situations like that.
But I think this makes it a unique situation.
And we're trying to negotiate a way through that in a manner that's most appropriate. It gets to the end. Martha, did you have any thoughts?
I think I'll pass.
Okay. Board members, move. Help me out here.
Well, you know, speaking for myself, I don't for a second question you could fake, okay? And I understand, just looking at these photographs, I can see how the work was absolutely necessary. To me, with the, and we can't undo what's been done. So to me, the real question comes down to what do we mean by like kind? You know, does wood have to be replaced with wood? And that's, I think, the issue that you spoke to. And frankly, it's beyond my technical expertise to know the answer to that question. Brian, just a procedural issue, because we're kind of in procedural limbo here. I don't know if, what was the, October 18th could be considered that we get 30-day notice, but are we under an obligation to render a decision within 30 days of, assuming we had gotten the proper notice, where are we?
Well, that's a big assumption. I mean, since that didn't happen, but, so the obligation is to give 30 days notice before the work.
Right.
But there's no constructive approval kind of situation, so they need to see that approval. The point of applying 30 days in advance is to give the time to the board to reflect on this and make an intelligent, informed decision. So, again, if the risk of being a little bit harsh, just because there was some action that transpired before the board got a proper application to consider, doesn't alter the board's timeline. So I would treat it as of the date that arrived, mine's dated 10/17, as the date for your 30-day review, and you should try to make that application and review it within that timeline. But, you know, that's the window that the board has, and it doesn't get accelerated or altered, just a business statement and sort of an awkward posture. So the board should take that time and do a proper review. That's your obligation of town, vested the authority in this board to do that. So you should fulfill your obligations in the best way you can with that. Just one procedural note, since you had asked that question. You know, I understand there's a building permit process, I understand there's a bylaw, but the preservation restriction is an interest in property recorded with registry deeds that runs with the land. It has independent burdens and obligations. Their obligation is to inform the board, not the building inspector. So it's unfortunate that, you know, things happened the way that they did, but there was an opportunity there irrespective of what your building inspector may have done or said, or how that transpired, to simply get on the board's agenda and say, I'm unclear, or I think my obligation is this. But every property owner has certain obligations under a whole slew of codes and bylaws, et cetera, and this is one of them. It becomes the law of the property. So that opportunity was there, it just didn't happen that way, unfortunately. So, I think, Mr. Chairman, your thought is a good one, that we don't have the technical expertise to make that determination here this evening. I made my two suggestions. One would be if the applicant or their representative have examples, they have an opportunity to educate the board in the meantime. If there are, you know, other examples of when these materials have been used, on what kinds of properties, what configurations, what circumstances, that may help educate the board, you may want to invite them to follow those. And the second one is, I heard a reference to the fact that, you know, these standards are really just guidelines and not law. That's fine, except that's what you have to work with. So if there's what I want to call contrary guidance, but if there's additional guidance or something that, you know, enhances what you have in front of you, you could invite them to submit that as well, or refer you to it. But if there's additional guidance that, you know, sort of illuminate this decision you have to make, you can certainly point that out. Because right now, this is what we have. So in the absence of any other information for you to go on, that's what we're going to go with.
Unless there was some discussion about actually replacing, not using the product that's been suggested.
I'm just going to interrupt this discussion for a second. We're supposed to start a public hearing, or a continuation of a public hearing at 7:15, so I am worried of time sensitivity, so we're just going to hold on that for a few minutes until we get this discussion. Leslie, did you have any comments?
Well, not really. I guess the only thing for me is going back, if, if that preservation restriction was in place, and they had gone in front of the planning board prior on different things, it almost seems like it would have been a natural thing to contact the planning board and not just go through Sam Jocelyn.
Going forward. George?
Yes. Page 91 of the restrictions, there's a note that smooth surface cementitious siding may be used to replace deteriorated wood siding only on secondary elevations that have minimal visibility. If they were willing to do that, it would be proper for the applicants, the people making the application here, for the difference, to contact the secretary and request a waiver. I don't know whether that's done, but do you think that might be possible?
I don't know.
I put it to you. But I mean, that's a question I think will be reasonably asked. Has the Historical Commission a position on this, a voting?
Of course, Channing Howard, chairman of the Historical Commission. We would like to go through a due process of an application following the secretary's standards, and we would gladly give you guidance. I will tell you that modern building materials will not be accepted on the outside of, on one of the most protected houses in town. That's what really needs to be in the application. It's, you start right out with is not using modern building materials. And we'd be glad to review the application once it's through, but at any point, if we can look at it, I mean...
So do you need, do you need a new building permit application?
A new, well, we need to have, the grantor needs to submit an application for the work, describe and scope, and description, and kind, and timetable, everything needs to be done, and it needs to come to you afford. Just give us a copy of it, we'll mark it up, and give it back to you. But I'll tell you right now, even modern building materials won't be accepted. It needs to be replaced with kind, kind in kind, it says on there, that'll be wood in wood.
Thank you. Okay.
Can I respond to that?
Sure. What I don't want to do is, I don't want to do a...
I just don't see anywhere in this restriction where the Historic Commission has any say. It's the planning board, and it was my understanding in 2006 that this was the only house in Newberry that the planning board oversees. I don't see in that restriction anywhere where the Historic Committee has anything to say about it.
Someone suggested that they had Alvin de Haar on it, but I think we can look to them for guidance.
I think I'd like the two recommendations that you made. I think they're very helpful and constructive, which would steer part of this discussion to you. Because I know that you've done some stuff in Cambridge, and you've got some historical stuff.
Yeah.
So if there's a way for you to facilitate information to us so that we can help understand and digest this, and I think that we're probably going to have to reach out to the secretaries.
Even the pictures that they include in their package are an excellent example of how well they will match to the wood. To the point where if this, if we'd been working now, had this painted, you wouldn't be able to tell the difference.
I appreciate the advancing of the materials. I just want to make sure that we're following what we're supposed to be following.
Sure, understand.
Because that's always...
Yep.
So I think we'll take the, I think the position that our notification took place on the seventeenth, but try to get something digested and responded by thirty days from that time. Our next time to reunite, Martha?
November thirteenth is our next meeting.
So hopefully, we could have some more information, provide and facilitate samples maybe to demonstrate, you know, kind, to help us understand this, make sure that we're following what we're supposed to be following, so that the preservation restriction follows the way it's supposed to follow, so that we get to the endpoint where we need work, where we need to be. So I'm sensitive to the weather, I'm sensitive to the time of the year. Here we are at this crossroad, and now we need to negotiate, navigate through the intersection that we're at.
Do you want to formally refer this to or seek advice from any other department's boards, officials to comment? Or has that been formally explained?
Hasn't, hasn't yet been.
I think we'll take that in a little advisement, as a couple of work in terms of the staff. So I think what we're probably going to suggest is that we have a couple of weeks for you to do what you need to do to help us understand...
Do we need to fulfill the thirty days? I know you're saying that's for your due diligence, but if we get this information to you quicker, is it possible to make a decision quicker?
If you give us the information and we have the opportunity from the board to digest it, we can contact the secretary's office so that we can make sure that we're matching our information, that everything is appropriate, and try to do it as timely as we can.
Sure.
And understanding the priorities that we're asking.
Yep.
I think that's where we go forward.
Okay.
Is that something? Okay, great.
The timing, if we're going to do this, we're going to have to typically a special, a special...
Yeah, realistically, I think thirteen, I mean, early stage, we consider to be conservative.
Two weeks.
We've got the, our students, so we're going to come together tonight. That's the only thing right now.
That's good.
So you guys will be looking in Untinked Seventy-Eight Elm Street for the winter, just so you know. And I'm...
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yep, all right. But yeah, we'll try to give you that information, so you have time to read it.
The board didn't create the situation, we're now just dealing with the situation.
Understood.
Okay. Appreciate it. Okay, thanks everyone.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Did we have our selectmen at all? So we're just going to invite our selectmen up to our table so that we can continue our previous discussion. Martha?
From each, or motion to open?
Second.
All right. This will be a continuation of the Newbury Golf Center public hearing, modifications of previous approvals, disturbance beyond approved limit of work. Planning board, this hearing is continuing from September eighteenth, twenty nineteen. Board of Selectmen, hearing is being continued from September eighteenth, twenty nineteen. All right, I would ask that we continue our meeting?
Yeah. Oh, yes.
Good. We are considering an application for modification of the previously approved site plans submitted by Eric Sorensen, President of Newbury Golf Center, Inc., for Newbury Golf Center, one thirty-one, one thirty-three, one fifty-one Scotland Road, assessment map, R forty-three lots two eleven and four B. The applicant requests approval of a proposed plan to restore areas of disturbance outside the approved limit of work for the project. Note, this requires a supermajority, three fifths vote from the planning board. The original site plan was approved and granted on November fifteenth, twenty seventeen.
Alicia, if you could read the statement for us. I want to make a quick note that following the closing of the public hearing, the board of selectmen have to do two quick pieces of business before we close our meeting and return the meeting to you guys.
Okay. Taking control of the meeting, are we?
Yeah.
It's a co-convening meeting.
All right, here we go. Alicia.
The board of selectmen is considering an application submitted by Eric Sorensen, President of Newbury Golf Center Incorporated, for modification to the special permit for the Newbury Golf Center, one thirty-one, one thirty-three, and one fifty-one Scotland Road, assessment map, R forty-three lots two eleven and four B. The applicant requests approval of a proposed plan to restore areas of disturbance outside the approved limit of work for the project. Note, requires a supermajority, four fifths vote of the selectmen. Since J.R. has refused himself, the decision will require all four main members to vote in favor. Original special permit was granted November fifteenth, twenty seventeen, and David Jessica is serving as the acting chair.
All right, so I think the way that we'll be handling this tonight is we'll have a kind of a status update report. We'll see where our schedule looks like, see if there are any points, and we'll have our boards ask questions. After our boards finish their questioning, then we will open up for any discussions and comments. Okay, so, what is yours, Eric?
All right, thank you. Well, first of all, thank you, a few who have been out to see the project, so I appreciate that.
Eric, I'm just going to have you stand close to that mic and just talk into it, just start from the top. Push yourself.
Eric Sorensen, Newbury Golf Center. First of all, thank you for the few that have come out and viewed the site. It's changed quite a bit in the last month. To update everybody, we have loomed and seeded all the way up until the non-jurisdictional wetland right here and where the road is. We do have germination all over this area, and we have germination around in the wetland. I know that was concerned, all the slopes have germinated, all the slopes on the non-jurisdictional are germinated. Couple of things with this plan, where we are with the project, we are getting into our next phase of crushing here in the next couple of days. We've updated the plan a little bit, where we've taken off a little bit of the paving. Hasn't affected the parking lot at all, still remains seventy-five parking spots, but there was some pavement that was up by the building area that we thought didn't need to be there and could be removed, and there'd be more infiltration of actually rainwater. So it was a better move here. We addressed with the plan, put the lights on here so you could see it. We've also addressed the front area of the driveway we're coming in at, which would be the old driveway. We found out from National Grid, we can loom and seed right in front where the telephone pole is. We do need to leave fourteen feet from there all the way up, but where the road is and where that concern was, we can see that, so it won't look like an entrance. So we will be doing that. Other than that, we're working on an updated schedule for the boards on where we're going. But we have crushing next, and then we do have four of the five catch basins in the driveway. We still have the infiltration basin to build, which we will be doing as we're crushing. We're bringing in three additional people to crush, so we'll have five guys working on the crushing and the drainage system. From there, we'll go over to, once they've distributed all the stone, they'll go over to trench for the National Grid and the water over here. From there, they'll go up into the septic and then down to the final on the short cam area. So that's kind of an update where we are.
Is this the plan that you're submitting to the board now?
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to give you an updated plan.
So this will be...
We brought this today to discuss it, and then we'll get you an updated plan to you.
Okay, all right. So there's been some lighting changes?
The lighting is still the same, basically, of where, you know, obviously we removed the fifty foot poles. We're just lighting for safety, obviously, the parking lot and the driveway. And we did take off the area over here with the, where the pavement was. Had some berms over on the eastern side of the property, and that obviously added where we're going to loom and seed by the driveway.
How many parking spaces did you remove?
There's none, none removed.
No, 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 from the paved area that you were going to have up?
There's, we didn't remove any spaces, it was just unnecessary pavement.
Excellent.
It's about three thousand square feet, so... It just didn't seem, as we were looking at it, that it was necessary. Yeah, it's for the turnaround, but we, trucks and everybody can still turn around, obviously, with the radius here.
So do we have a revised schedule, a chance?
We're working on that, we'll get that to you here in the next day or two.
Any questions from that room?
Probably, Eric, a definition of crushing. And I don't really have, you know, a succinct reason for not understanding, but I'm a little lost as to, I mean, was this good pavement? Three thousand feet of pavement is a lot. What happened?
It was unnecessary, it was obvious.
But how to get, you guys put it down?
They did put it, we put it there with the old engineers, but working with the new engineers, they thought it was unnecessary, and as we're going through this, to remove it for a variety of reasons.
I think he's asking, did you put it down, meaning did you put it down and then rip it up? Or you're saying that you just removed it, meaning you took it out of the...
Yeah.
Oh, it's out of the plan.
Out of the plan, yeah. It was out of the plan.
I don't think I can put down the cost of pavement.
No, no, no.
I'm okay with it.
As we're going through, you know, there's one thing on the plan and see things, you know, as we're getting, going through the project, I mean, one of the big examples is how bad the soil...
I'm okay with that.
How bad the soils are up there, they're terrible. They're clay based, they're horrible. So obviously, you know, as we're looming and seeding, we're noticing the loom that we've saved versus the loom that we've tracked in is negative. I mean, it's just, and we've tested both of the looms and, you know, stuff like that, so...
And crushing is just crushing the stone that's on site now?
Yeah, so what we're doing with the crusher, we're writing it down to three different varieties, inch and a half, three-fourths of an inch, and stone dusting. So we'll have three different piles of stone that we get out of all the ledge, hammer for the last six months.
Were we able to finish that one ledge that was remained?
Yeah, there's about an hour left of it, yes, it is down. Maybe two hours at the most, but it's pretty much done. That was the hardest ledge. These guys have been hammering ledge for forty years, and the hardest ledge, they said, was in Manchester, by the Sea and the Ocean, they said that that piece of ledge is harder. It basically turns to dust as you hit it. I mean, it took, it was something the size of this table here, it took three days to do. And it just was brutal.
You wouldn't expect anything less.
You know, the other ledge was manageable, but when you got to the end, this last piece was just, it was brutal.
So I have some questions, David. When you say crushing the stone, is that love?
It's not louder than the hammer.
Okay, it's less love than the...
Yes, it's nothing.
And what, are you going to be doing that during regular working hours?
Exactly. Unless you want to let these guys go a little bit longer, they will work a lot harder.
Yeah. As far as the lighting plan goes, the updated lighting plan?
Yeah.
Can I get a closer look at that?
Sure.
I'm curious as to what the lighting is going to be in the parking lot here. So did any of these lights change?
I mean, a little bit, not much. I mean, spacing wise, not much at all.
Okay, so the...
To be honest with you, there was lights on this side as well, and we kept them all on this side for trenching reasons, because it's so, the ledge is so bad down there, especially on this side.
Right, so you can't really put them on this side because of the light, right?
You can, we've just got to hammer for, again, weeks and weeks.
Yeah, so...
So we're trying to avoid...
All right, so my question is, when you come into the road here, the lights are going to be on this side, they're not going to be on this side because of the light.
Keep in mind, this is about thirty feet right here, okay? It's a junior's property, so...
Yeah, this is the wet...
But this is a thirty foot drop from here, this is about thirty-six, this is going to be a fifty up here.
This is the deep cut that you did.
It's a big deep cut.
Yeah. Okay, and then when you come up here, so each one of these numbers is a light, correct?
These numbers, that's the grade. That's like, the grade here is seventy-two, the grade going down.
Okay, so we don't have lighting fixtures on this, do we?
These don't, these are where they're going to be.
So these little stars are the lighting fixtures, okay. So you're going to have them here, 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 and 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 here. And then over here, and here. And you don't have any, any lighting out here?
There'll be no lighting out here. This is where we removed, we have the six poles.
And you're not going to have any lighting up here?
No.
So this will be the new plan that we sent to the board? Has it been submitted yet?
Right.
Out of the rain area.
Right. So just so the board knows, my board knows, I have a concern about the lights along this side here. I want to be sure that there's no spill over onto the neighborhood, onto the neighbor. You know what I'm saying?
Any questions from the planning board members? I have a couple of questions. So we'll be getting a new, a new plan, which will describe the seeding for the, the old, the right of way.
Yeah.
We'll have the new lighting plan. When we were out there, did your engineer come to you?
Yes.
Oh, beautiful.
And I talked to him, well, we talked about the driveway. So he can address that for you?
That'd be good, yeah.
Mike, he wanted to address the driveway, and obviously the drainage in the driveway. He could talk a little bit about, obviously, the catch basins and the pipes and how was engineered the driveway.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mike and Ham with more on camera group. So again, as you know, we're not the engineer of record on this, but as a professional engineer, I can answer questions regarding the drainage. So I think you had questions about the drainage in the driveway, right, and how that would be managed. So this plan, this actually, so we have the catch basins. This plan just shows where the catch basins are shown on your black squares. Catch basins is there, there's one here, two there. So these, you know, it seems, seems an appropriate design to me on this. The one thing I may recommend is like a, you know, higher capacity grade, given the slope of the pavement. Was that kind of the trend you thought you were thinking was how this place steeped and the amount of water coming down, or was it totally...
Yeah, just so the boys know, we did a quick psych walk last, was that?
Thursday.
Thursday, Martha and I went out, and Joe and Leslie, I probably can have you read Joe's emails to us for sure that I can pick them up. There was some concerns with regards to management of water at that time. And as I was towards the door and the hill, and I stood there with Eric, and I looked up, and the depth or the height of this project became apparent to me, and these large hills became evident to me. Concerned that if we're having potential issues now with water management, and I understand that the final drain is not done in place, the front catch basin is not in place, with the amount of space that is open, and considering the sunlight that's going to hit this site in the wintertime, when we have a potential for snow melting, freezing, snow melting, freezing, and then turning that driveway into a potential Olympic event, an ice event, what effect that would have, potentially have on the catchment? Because it seems to be, I don't want to say struggling now, and I understand that it's not all in place, I just want to try to be proactive to make sure that it will, it will address it. And I understand you're not the engineer that designed this and your instance project at this point in time, so I'm looking to you to help us feel comfortable with that potential scenario, or the heavy rain scenarios.
Can I just ask you a question from what you just said? So...
So is your concern that the winter, if it's not ready by the winter, that that's when you think there's some of your problem or when it's totally completed?
In general, right?
Okay.
Yeah, in general. There's, there's a lot of landscape there for water to run down.
Absolutely, yeah.
And in the winter, you know, it's, in the summertime, there'll be grass, which will absorb, which will be great. But in the winter, we won't have that, that lecture.
Correct.
We'll be dealing with snow and potentially a strong sun, because strong, strong sun comes in that area. And melt, and then onto that roadway.
Right, right, and I think, you know, generally, roadways are crowned such that, you know, you've got a high point in the middle of the road and it's sloped each side and that would help obviously keep any, any of that meltwater in the gutters, of course, so that I would say would be, you know, how that would get handled. But aside from that, it's, it's fairly typical design of catch basins, manholes. So, you know, all this runoff that's coming down here, well, actually there's a manhole here and it's actually going this way. So it's, it's kind of a benefit because we're really trying to get water into this central area. So that you can see what the design engineer was thinking is to, is to get as much of this water here into this larger basin. So that's what, that's what's key about these. Right now, there's a diversion swale, just a stone, crushed stone diversion swale kind of accomplishing that. But once everything's said and done, that's what's gonna keep, will kind of match that, the current drainage pattern. We're trying to keep a lot of this water getting into the central area. And then you have these catch basins down here, here, and these are tied into smaller underground systems is what the engineer has designed. Underground systems here for these, for the catch basins that are too far down the hill to get into the area. Uh, so, yeah, essentially, winter, winter months, you'll have some meltwater. It'll be kind of just passively getting into those catch basins and draining into these, into these systems.
So you, you've been on the site recently, so you have an appreciation of what it looks like.
Oh, yes, much, yeah, exactly.
So you're comfortable with the current design to handle water, storm water, as it's designed? You're comfortable with that?
Yeah, yeah, sorry. In the finished condition, that's, yeah. It's the midday between what's happening now and what will happen when. And even, you know, you get started to get germination, things start to change immediately, you know, soils like that, so.
Mr. German? Is the site generally north-facing?
So the sun actually, yeah, I mean, it's a, it's kind of what, you can north out. If you do something like this, so you're actually, your winter sun, you wanna actually be getting, you know, and this is a, a north slope, actually. It's not a south-facing slope, so you're kind of, your sun would actually, you're kind of behind, you know, you're very, very low, low, you know, December thirty, or twenty-first. The solstice would be, yeah, you actually won't get too much, too much sun, but, but, um, yeah, the sun's gonna come, you know.
Thank you. Mr. Chair? Joe would, um, check all those calculations anyway, would be all the drainage counts to make sure any area, everything jives. I don't know if he's done that yet, but he probably would, I imagine. And it might put you on my, it easier too. So he thinks we'll have to take the parking lot and all the areas that drain and get those tels in order.
Jeff, he did that in order for it to pass.
Yeah.
So that's already done.
The stormwater review.
So do we know when your drains are gonna be in place?
Well, as soon as we start crushing, we're bringing that crushed stone to the driveway. As they're doing this, they're bringing it down here. We're gonna, before we open this up, this needs, the binder coat needs to go on this. I talked to John yesterday about it and this was, he said this needs to go on here. So this is gonna be paved sooner than later, once he gets this all crushed, once these guys get this. Because for your reason, we don't wanna do it twice. We don't wanna wash out. We wanna grade it, get it right, get that binder coat down.
So if Joe, when are you gonna put, when are you gonna put the, this, the storm, the drainage?
He's doing, he's gonna start to do that. The, four of the, four of the five catch basins are in here. You got the last catch basin right here. And then you need this crushed stone for the infiltration system. There's a lot of crushed stone in here. So as they're doing that, he will be building this. So once he gets this done, it will be ready to, to the binder coat. And these guys are gonna move and shake with that, that crusher. As soon as it comes off the conveyor belt, instead of letting it sit, so they have to move it twice, they're putting a regular truck and bringing it right out here. Because it's silly to move stuff twice. That's why you got five guys, I mean, the pilot, the, the number of the pilots, it's pretty big, it's right here. So as it's coming right off those huge conveyor belts, it's bang, all the way up, everywhere.
So I guess Martha, I have a question for you. Um, looking in, in a packet at all these pictures, um, and the way that it's draining this week?
Yeah, last Wednesday and then again on Sunday with the two heavy rains that we had.
Right. So I guess my question is, when is that gonna be addressed?
Um, I think that's a question, um, for Eric, actually.
Do you want to say what to say?
What's gonna be addressed, the storms?
The runoff.
The runoff. I mean, has, what measures have been taken to address that?
Right, so obviously we have that huge storm on, um.
Week ago?
A week ago, and then we had rain Sunday, which Joe came to the property on Sunday at four o'clock. And no one was working, locked the site. Now, I don't know if he, did he give you a report, Martha? I talked to him today about Sunday.
Um, he, he did.
Okay, so there was no issue Sunday with that rain. Obviously, we got torrential downpour storm before that. And there was some runoff. Obviously, we fixed that. We, we made sure these were all tight, uh, the, the basins down here, the silt fence. So when we got the same amount of rain, obviously in a different fashion, it was a lot smoother on Sunday versus the storm prior to that.
Oh, there was, there was, I'm sorry, there, there were, there was some runoff going into the catch basin at the end of Carbone's driveway and a couple of things. So, um, I apologize if we did get those.
On Sunday?
On Sunday, yeah.
So for, on this side of the site over here?
On, yeah, on that side of the site.
So the water was going uphill towards the Carbone's?
Um, the report was that it came down the driveway into that catch basin that's right down there.
I haven't, I'm not saying it hasn't, but I haven't seen that in three years, the water go uphill, because that's uphill, but it could have, I mean, if we got it up. Typically, what happens with the site and all the runoff comes down, comes obviously through the, there's a wetland here, goes in the wet, it's in the wetland because everything, the water, it's in that little ravine and then it comes all the way down here to the, the basin that goes across the street, so that's new. I'll have to look at that. He didn't mention that when I talked to him today, 'cause I asked him if there's any issues that he saw Sunday. 'Cause I was out there Sunday, I didn't see him, but I did check Sunday night, 'cause I didn't see that.
Okay.
But everything that, going back to the problem that we had prior that we, down here, all this was addressed and we didn't see an issue after that. And that was during, that problem occurred when it was torrential, torrential downpour in about forty-five minutes span. I mean, there was just raining cats and dogs.
How have you prepared for the storm we're expecting tomorrow?
So obviously, we, we rechecked all our basins. Down here is empty. We removed the silt from the, um, check dams. Everything is tight, obviously, the, the catch basins, all the, all the straw walls and everything is, is ready for.
What have you done around the non-jurisdictional, where you're having a lot of washout?
So right here, we're putting in riprap down in here. We haven't done, it's, it's naturally created a, it's right here, actually. Has naturally created a, a riprap itself where it's going in there. So we're, we're patting down, gonna put riprap in there, so it drains on its own. You know, the only good thing about these storms is we see where the water's going. I mean, to be honest with you.
It's a solid test.
You know, out here, we've created the dry ponds, and I don't know if Joe's taken any pictures for you guys of the dry ponds. You know, they've, they're holding water, which is great, so we know where the water's going. You know, obviously with this, all the, um, germination here, it is covered over by, uh, while we're cutting in, um, property, and Bernie was out the other day, and typically that fills up during storms. Because we have now germination here, they're getting no, no runoff over there. So obviously, something's working here. It was actually, it's a, you know, we thought for years, you know, it was a spring, but maybe there isn't because now you've created germination, you're holding the water, which is great. So there's no silt going in there and we have a barrier around here, silt fence and straw wattle, and the germination obviously helps.
I'm just gonna interrupt just for a sec.
Yeah.
We're supposed to start a public hearing at seven forty-five for a special permit. We're gonna delay that until we can finish that discussion, so anybody here for the special permit hearing, just wanna let you know that we'll continue. We'll get to that in a minute, thanks. Other questions from the board, board members?
I know you're planning to submit a revised schedule.
Mm-hmm.
How far behind the schedule you submitted previously do you think you are?
I think a couple of weeks. I mean, I think the crusher's gonna speed things up. You know, obviously, it has this in here. He's gonna move quickly. I'm working with John to finalize that schedule. Obviously, he sets it. I don't, you know, I'm there every day, obviously, you know, with subcontrasts with the building and everything else. But obviously, the site work, that's his. So I will, I think it's only a couple of weeks. Obviously, we had some weather. We can't control the weather. Days like today, we couldn't do much except bring material in. You're doing more damage moving all that, that equipment around. You know, the good thing is the weather with the soil temperatures are still about three weeks behind. So the soil, I mean, tomorrow's gonna be almost seventy degrees. That soil's warm, the grass is growing. We're getting germination within seven days. So, you know, and I invite anybody to come up and take a look at how, I mean, it is, it's really popped up at the site.
Well, that word we use, it pops up.
You've been out there.
Yeah. So, uh, are engineers okay with our drainage? You're gonna submit this new plan?
Yeah, we'll get that to Martha.
And that's gonna have modifications to lighting?
Yep.
You're gonna get us a new schedule when, when should we accept that?
Monday at the latest.
Okay, Wednesday?
Yeah, I should, I mean, you know, talk to John tomorrow. I'd like to get it to you Friday, you know, I'd like to get it to you tomorrow. I just wanna make sure everybody's on the same page, what I have. And I have a rough one, but I need him to comment on it.
Okay, great. Anything else?
No, I think, you know, obviously, you talked about the shorting area last time. That's the last thing we're gonna do. You know, I know you're kind of waiting to see germination. You've seen germination. We're not gonna do anything with that until the end, so I don't know how you wanna handle that.
Well, I think you have to do the trenching for National Grid and, yeah, get a couple more things before it gets.
Right.
So.
You know, we might stockpile some stone down here because we need to crush stone down here for some stuff, so if you have any issue.
So, again, what we agreed upon, I think, is that, you know, Damon and I would go out, take a look.
Right.
The board's agree, the flexibility to do what we need to do, so we don't have to delay this and coming back to another meeting.
We're not gonna start messing with the grades, but we're gonna stockpile some stuff down here, just for the greens. We do need crushed stones. Jeff knows how to build a green. We do need some special material there.
So you're asking us to, to stockpile some stuff down?
Yeah.
Okay, is that, that goes again?
Yeah, as long as they're not digging in the ground, they're just punting stuff down. That's fine.
Good. Hey, Leslie, um, there are two emails from, uh, Joe that we should probably just read into the record. The first email's from October twenty-third, which was right after we had that big rain. Uh, but the second one, which is a little bit more concerning, which was the ten twenty-seven, that was, um, up over the weekend. So I think those are, those are just a statement of what happened in the past.
Wednesday, October twenty-third, Martha, first picture is a salty runoff entering the state drain, state drain system at the location of the new driveway. Second picture is salty runoff at Scotland Road adjacent to the existing driveway. Providing pictures. And.
Yeah, the twenty-third and the twenty-seventh, just so we have those.
First picture is runoff that has bypassed the stone swale coming down the new driveway. It has filled the excavation where the drainage structures are in continuous, excuse me, down slope. Second picture is of the stone swale carrying a substantial flow, that some of it is breaking out and causing issues in the drainage. Also on the twenty-third, first picture appears to be where much of the runoff is coming from. It cannot be contained on site and is flowing down both sides of the swamp cars, creating considerable erosion. It flows into the non-jurisdictional wetland and eventually into the stone swale across the driveway. The second picture shows the silt fence being overwhelmed adjacent to the wetland near the large basin.
Can I, can I comment on something on that?
No, just let, I'll just look the record.
October twenty-third, as mentioned earlier, both Eric and one of John's men were on site to see the issues this AM. No actions were undertaken to correct the situation while I was there. Eric said they would be addressed. Ten twenty-seven, I was at the site at about three thirty today. Here are some pictures. I think the issue starts when the site runoff channelizes and runs down the slope into the non-jurisdictional wetland. If this runoff could be held on site or directed to the large basin, I think the downstream issues would be minimalized. Runoff comes back into the site and travels through the stone swale, and some of it is escaping and traveling down the driveway. And on the twenty-seventh, in these pictures, you can see runoff leaving the site, the stone wall near the old driveway, and then into the drainage system.
I think the, the beauty of this exercise is it lets us know that we're finding out where water's going.
Right.
So Joe's helping you understand where it's going and just address it.
Okay, okay, so a couple of things. First, I didn't get, I'd love to get a copy of those, and I've asked for that a couple of times. But, so let's talk about the first one, the twenty-third, the breaching of the silt fence. No, no, but I, I didn't wanna.
No, it's okay, it was a big storm.
No, 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 but I, I wanna address it because we have double silt fence there. So one of them was breached, but the second one wasn't. So like, little things like that, I did, we were proactive. I called Doug that morning to say we were working on, so what's correspondence with the town. So, you know, obviously, the correspondence has been an issue in the past and I wanna make sure that it's not now. So things like that, I just wanna be cop, you know, if we can get it, I can get it to my guys, but they're on top of it. But little things like that, we are addressing, we are being proactive. I just want the board to know that.
I think you appreciate that the twenty-third was a big storm. I think the twenty-seventh was just to see how things were looking after a big storm. And again, this is a learning process, and so he's making his comments so that you can address them and, and be constructive. Not, this is not meant to be, at this point in time, it's not to be critical.
Alright, no, but I, I wanna just address those couple of things.
Yeah, this is like, it's a huge work in progress. The boards appreciate that. Martha, do we have any other letters from others that we need to read for our?
I haven't received any other comments.
Okay, any other comments or questions from our board members? Okay, at this point in time, I'd like to open this up to the public for any comments at this, at this time? Any public comments or questions?
Jeff Campbell, you're on twenty-three Scotland Road. I just wanna make sure that, um.
Martha, do I have a microphone, Jeff?
I don't think your camera's on, 'cause nobody's watching it.
Yeah, no, no, it's, it's being recorded.
I'm getting a little.
It's being recorded, it will be broadcast.
I just wanna say that I appreciate that. I would like to see the plan for the non-lights at some point. Will you get it to them tomorrow?
Uh, I don't know about tomorrow, 'cause we gotta make some final adjustments. We will get it in the next few days to, to the board.
Okay, 'cause I would like to see that, what that looks like. And I appreciate the driveway. We did know that National Grid would allow the flag to get the body of the driveway, so I do appreciate that.
So I think the, the lighting was gonna be, or the plan's gonna be very similar to what's behind you, which shows that there's no lighting in, in the back green right now?
So back here?
Right.
But talking about these, uh, probably would be fine.
So these are the lights for parking lot?
Just these two right here, ideally. It's a chance we deserve, but we have no problem with getting these over there, so it's not, obviously, the berms here. This is the bottom here, we'll get you this, we're, um, no, we do have to leave it by that pole, the pole hop.
Okay, yeah.
Up here, more grass, so there's no confusion when people turn it in there.
So my biggest thing is the six, the lights that have been in the back here, which we've been fighting about since we get, dig on, completely.
No, no, these are, these are all gone.
Completely gone.
Yeah.
Those are on the equation right now.
Okay.
The fixtures that Martha was recommending over the back, I actually think they're better off on this side facing this way than on this side.
I, I actually happen to agree with you, Mr. Rosen, that moving the lights, while it seems further away makes intuitive sense, the way the lights bounce, it may be more disruptive to the Carbone's to have them further away shining towards their property. But that's something we can discuss when we actually have a plan, present, discuss.
Any other, uh, public questions or comments? Please come to the microphone, identify yourself, and address.
You know, Williams, Paul Scotland Heights, not enough butter, but I live down the street. I think what's been unrepresented in all of these public hearings and I'm trying to make them all, is the general sense of the community. How many people want this project completed? It's been almost two years now, and these people aren't coming to these meetings. They expect the selectmen and the planning board to do their job. I appreciate the others and all the things they brought up. But I'm not sure everyone in the decision-making mode appreciates how many people want this. in the decision-making mode appreciates how many people want this thing completed, and they're tired of having to force this project to be jumping through too many hoops. Granted, they're not at the meetings, they should, if they want to be, you know, advised of everything that's happening. But the more you postpone it, it's like paralysis by analysis. And every time a meeting happens, things come up, review it, and then it's just kind of postponed to the next meeting, and it's been going on almost twenty-three months now.
Can I respond?
And I just want to, I want to, I get calls all the time, it doesn't matter where I am, because I live off Scotland Road, what's going on, what's holding it up? And I try to explain it, and they don't want to come to the meetings, they just want to see it completed. I just think those voices are unrepresented at these public hearings.
I appreciate your comments, and there's no one, I don't think there's anyone on this board that would not like to see this project completed, put to bed, done, and the people sitting at this board, and we've been coming to the, as you, as you know, for two years. We're in the situation that we're in because of the circumstances that took place. The project is advancing, it's making great leaps and bounds, and it's been accelerated the past few months, and we want everything to occur and to be done in the appropriate manner. So we, we support your opinion and your approach, thank you very much.
Can I ask you something? This project is being held up not because of the town, either. This special proposition back in November, twenty seventeen, unfortunately, we are a rule of law, and when the applicant, whether or not it was intended, violated our rules, the reason why this project is being held up is because of the applicant, it's not because of the town. So if next time somebody calls you and asks for that, if you could pass that law along, that would be much appreciated, because we have issued the permit, and the applicant needs to, um, he's, he's on the right track now, but for a few years, he was spinning his wheels, he didn't have the right, the right help. So now hopefully, hopefully by spring, he'll be eating ice cream up there, and it'll be eating on.
I respectfully disagree with your observation, because I think it's not a one-way street, it's a two-way street. Things have happened, he's accepted responsibility for the nature of that, of too much land he declared, and he's dealing with that on his own, but I don't think it's a one-way street that he has been the cause of all the delays. I really don't believe that, and that's, I don't want to argue any more.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
Hi, Janine Cunningham, one forty-three Scotland Road, I am on the butter, and believe me, there is nobody that wants this project completed as fast as possible. I have listened to Rock being hammered for six months, and it's intolerable, and I can't imagine what three people are going to be doing this week. I hope so, because, I mean, it, it gives you a headache every day, you know, so I mean, believe me, there is nobody who wants it done faster than us, who are the directors of others. And we greatly appreciate what you have done, and all of this affects us most directly. I want it open too, you know, and I'm, frankly, I'm an ice creamaholic, so I'm probably going to be wandering that way, trying not to, but, but, we want, you know, we want it done too, but we want it done right, and we don't want it, we have to live with all of that afterwards, and we just want to make sure that it's going to be functioning properly, that I'm not going to be staring at, you know, lights or whatever. And Eric has been very good to, to me with discussions and things like that, so that's not an issue for me, but I just greatly appreciate all that you've done to make sure that it's being done right, and we want it done more than ever.
The board's, the board's appreciate your comments, appreciate your patience, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
I think it's worth noting also, from both parties' concern, the site proved to be more challenging than anyone thought it would be.
Absolutely, yeah.
So, and we tried to react to certain things as they've happened.
I mean, no one could tell how hard that ledge was.
Well, and how much it was.
Great, um, do you think we need to review our superseding conditions, or are you comfortable with as they sit?
I don't see anything that needs review at this point, is my board?
No, I'm comfortable.
Are you going to be comfortable? Okay. Our schedule will be coming, we don't have a schedule yet, hopefully we'll have that scheduled Monday. I think our next actions are, you're going to get us a new lighting plan?
We're going to get you on the line.
Right, you're going to get us a schedule. Martha, anything else that we need to think about?
No, I think that's it, except for some continuation.
All right, uh, let's look for dates.
Do, do we have any suggestions for dates from you guys as far as when you'd like to be back for the board?
First, first week December, second week December.
First week of December, Planning Board has a meeting on the fourth, um, we're going to have a meeting on the nineteenth. We have a meeting on the nineteenth?
Yeah.
I have meetings.
So we, Planning Board has meetings on the fourth and the eighteenth?
And we'll have a meeting on the tenth and the twentieth. Not the fourth, right? Sorry, just doing the math, not thinking about the dates.
I have a conflict on the fourth, so either the tenth or the eighteenth would be preferred?
Eighteenth is young, is young before?
No, December. It might be, it might be Hanukkah, but.
Hanukkah's not until Christmas.
If I'm, if I'm eating potato, that's not going to keep it from coming to me. fasting is another thing, but.
Is December, are you, are you thinking of trying to proceed at all as of any of your plans for the short period?
Yeah, that's a great question, but I don't, do we have to come back for that, or have we already empowered the shares?
I think if Damon and...
Yeah, if we're happy with the site treatment, what has grown, the infiltration systems that are in place, we can allow the short king to go forward with what you guys approved from the last meeting.
Yeah, so I, I don't think there's a rush to get in here before then, I mean, certainly with Thanksgiving, maybe before. I thi, I think either the tenth or the eighteenth are fine.
Uh, and you said, do you have a conflict on the fourth?
On the fourth, yeah.
Uh, is, does my, is my board aware of any conflicts on the tenth for members?
The tenth of December, I've got a veterans meeting, I gotta find what day it was, it was one of the days we just pulled up, one second.
It would be one of our normal selecting.
Okay, that's, as long as it's on Wednesday night, I'm fine. Wednesday night is the veteran meeting.
Yeah, it's a two, that should be a Tuesday to Wednesday, yes.
Tuesday's no problem.
Just as a reminder, December tenth is the public hearing for the two seventy-seven High Road, sixty-one A, and that's been set for seven fifteen.
Seven fifteen, that's the sixty-one A, so seven forty-five? Yeah.
Should be okay, you can always delay the opening if you need to.
So we're looking at December tenth, that's seven forty-five? That works for you?
Thank you, yeah, that would be great.
So if I could get a motion from a member of my board to continue the public hearing to December tenth at seven forty-five?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I entertain a similar motion.
I move to continue the public hearing to December tenth at seven forty-five.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye. All right.
Need to continue with...
Yes, I need to do a few minutes of business for the selection, so if you guys could, if people want to get up and move around, we'll let you guys leave, and then do our quick things and return to the...
One more thing, if anybody wants to come out, just letting them know, compensate the property, please, you're welcome.
All right. We have a one-day liquor license, Tim Harris, Triton fundraiser at the Byfield Community Arts Center, seven Central Street, Byfield, Saturday, November second, from six thirty PM to eleven PM. Can I get a motion?
Motion. Oh, yeah. Second.
Please, Phil, come on up, go to the microphone. Please state your name and tell us about your event.
My name is Tim Harris, this is a benefit for Triton Sports.
Uh, hold on just a sec, ladies in the back there, you're right in front of the microphone, and so you get picked up in excess of us, and so they'll just hear you in the back there. Thank you. Please, sorry.
My name is Tim Harris of them Byfield, three leeway row, and I've been coaching sports for Triton Athletics for many years, mostly at the youth level. They have high school, my wife and I, my wife Karen and I, we have two high school daughters who play high school sports, and some of the other coaches that I coached with who also have children in Triton, it came up if we played music and we wanted to have an event to help raise some money for Triton Sports, and so we secured rental with the Byfield Community Arts Center, and that's where we're going to have our event.
Fantastic.
And I think everything's in order, Kevin Allen, so.
Yes, Ellen said everything is in order. Um, is there any discussion from my board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Of the, Ellen is three?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ellen will, will give you any paperwork you need, I think, you're all set having submitted it to us, I don't think we need anything.
Okay.
If she does, she'll email you, what she's about to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a good sign on here. I have a request for public property use, special permit, danner on the upper green backstop, Newbury Coral Society fundraiser, November twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, through Monday, November ninth, two thousand nineteen.
December ninth.
Sorry, December ninth.
Motion, Mary, just, can anyone speak to that?
File means...
State your name.
Martha Taylor, town floor and member of the Coral Society, this is the traditional backstop that they do every year before every concert, so Friday, two weeks before, until right after the concert, is December seventh and eighth this year, Saturday and Sunday.
And what are you guys singing this year?
Uh, it's a mix of music, it's, I think it's called Christmas in Brass or something like that, so we're doing some, some Gabrielli and some other things, as well as Pinkham's Christmas guitar and some more modern pieces, it's a mix, and some traditional Christmas bells, I sing alongs.
Fantastic.
Aye.
Awesome.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn, get our planning boards away.
Second.
Any discussions? All those in favor? Let's retire to the bathroom to sing a little.
Thank you for having us. Uh, we're going to continue now with the planning board meeting, and we're going to go into the agenda item for public hearing, and we have the notice ready.
Town of Newbury Planning Board Public Hearing Notice, residents of the town of Newbury and other interested persons, please note that on Wednesday, October thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, at seven forty-five PM, the Newbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing in the second floor hearing room at the Newbury United School Offices, twelve Kentway, Byfield, Mass, or nineteen twenty-two, to consider the application of Jennifer Ford, Seacoast Canine, for renewal of a special permit to operate dog daycare, including dog training and dog play space at thirty-five Downfall Road, Byfield, Mass, Assessors Math R forty-one, lot sixty, in the residential agriculture district. Copies of the application are on file at the town clerk and the planning office, twelve Kentway, Suite one-on-one, Byfield, Mass, and are available for review during regular work hours.
How about we switch?
For more information, contact the planning office at nine seven eight four six five oh eight six two, extension three one two. All persons interested in or wishing to be part of this special permit, renewal applications should appear at the time and place suggested by Peter Pecos, Chair, Newbury Planning Board.
That was published, the Newbury Port Gillian News on the fifteenth of October, the twenty-second of October, very good, thank you very much, sir. All right, just so everyone knows how this will work this evening, we will have the applicants submit their application, and with a small presentation, board members will ask questions that they might have at this point in time in the discussion, and then we'll open it up for public comments.
I have just received another communication, I'll read it to the record.
Great, great, great.
And we need the green card, green cards and tear sheets? Thank you, that's right. Take care, thanks.
All right. Who would like to make the offer today?
I'll start, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much, members of the board, chairman, members of the public. My name's Benjamin Timman, I represent Seacoast Canine and Jenny Ford, and we appreciate the opportunity to present to you this evening as to why we feel the board should approve the renewal of a one-year special permit for this business. As everyone knows who has participated in this process in the past, it has been spirited in the process that we had last year, and in the meeting that we had in September, that continued, and there certainly has been disagreement regarding this business on the part of some of the neighbors on Downfall Road and some of the adjoining streets. We feel very, very strongly, and I stated this in September as to Jenny, that Jenny Ford and Seacoast has done everything they possibly could do and made tremendous efforts to comply with each and every condition on the special permit. The area of controversy certainly has been with respect to traffic trips, and while we're very willing and happy to answer any questions with regard to our compliance on the number of traffic trips of the past year, what I want to focus on tonight is what we're proposing for the year going forward, which is a significantly scaled back proposal for the number of dogs, employees, and traffic trips, business traffic trips that would be occurring to and from thirty-five Downfall Road. Just by way of background, as the board and the public has been following this, knows the way that Jenny runs the business, and she'll be able to answer whatever questions there are, and also plans to make a statement later, is that she has employees who work for her business, Seacoast Canines, who leave their respective homes in, you know, various towns in the area each morning, they go and pick up client dogs, and then they make one trip to thirty-five Downfall Road in the mornings with the dogs that they have picked up from clients, and then they leave in the afternoon to bring those dogs to, back to the clients. And so the dogs and the non-resident employees of the business spend the day at this, at the farm, as Jenny calls it. The special permit last year called for the following. It permitted up to six non-resident employees at thirty-five Downfall Road, and it limited the number of weekly round trips to thirty, which was six round trips per day, or twelve total trips, again, for business trips by non-resident employees. There was a maximum of forty dogs on-site permitted. As you'll recall, last year Jenny asked for forty as a cushion, she seldom has that many dogs, but that's what the special permit called for last year. What we're proposing this year, and I'll explain to the board, and some of the board members may know this based on our September presentation. and some of the board members may know this based on our September presentation, is essentially a reduction of one-third in each of those numbers. So rather than a maximum of six non-resident employees at the property per day, there would be four. The number of weekly trips by those four would go down from 30 to 20. So again, that's, that's five days a week, because we're only talking about weekdays when the employees come in. And each employee, each of the four employees, making a round trip essentially per day for business purposes, that's eight times five, I beg your pardon, my math is a little shaky on that, 20 per week. So that's four round trips. I was confusing the round trips with the, with each way. So four round trips for four employees times five days is 20 round trips, which is a reduction of one-third from the 30. And the number of dogs would also go down. Jenny's asking for a cap of 35, which again provides a cushion beyond the number of dogs that she would intend to have there. Now, the reason that Jenny is asking for a significantly scaled back operation is twofold. The business reason is that she has, as of, actually this Saturday, November 2nd, is going to be opening a large facility, 4,200 square feet, in the town of Salisbury, which is mostly indoor, with some outdoor space on Rabbit Road in Salisbury that she is leasing in order to have the majority of her clients' dogs playing, training, and staying at that facility during the week. So the farm is essentially going to become a smaller part of her operation to accommodate those clients who, you know, basically aren't interested in the new indoor facility, but would continue at least over the next year, if we receive a special permit, to go to the farm. So Jenny started that process in May of trying to find alternative space that she can begin to shift operations to a facility other than her home. She's not, you know, interested in having a business there over the long term, but she is running this business, growing it as a young entrepreneur, and had rights to do so under the special permit. Her brother lives there as well. He works for the business too, and the same principle. They would like to, you know, move this business more and more to the Salisbury facility. So she began looking in May, and that leads me to the second reason why she's making the change, which is to accommodate the neighborhood. So Jenny recognizes that this has been a contentious process. I don't think it's going to be worth our while to, tonight, debate all the reasons why we think much of the criticism has been unfounded. We're willing to do that if it comes up, particularly any questions that the board members have about compliance, because we feel very good about the compliance. But setting that to the side for a minute, Jenny recognized that it's in everyone's interest to scale this back. So she looked for several months and found, you know, pretty expensive and large commercial space in Salisbury. So that is the nuts and bolts of what we're proposing, essentially a one-third reduction in the areas of the special permit that have been of greatest concern. And I can tell you that Jenny will continue to work very, very hard and take very seriously these conditions. She has every interest in abiding by the special permit. And again, she has done so, and I'm happy to defend that. But I'm hoping we can focus on the future in our proposal that should be reasonable, I think, to the board. So I'm happy to answer any questions, and I know that Jenny would like to speak, maybe after some, some others, and certainly those members of the public, but whatever the board's pleasure is with regard to what you'd like to do next.
Do any members at this time have any questions?
Just a couple. So you're looking for four vehicle trips per day, round trip vehicle trips per day?
That's correct, for the non-residents, right.
Okay. You're not going to transport 35 dogs in those four trips, so how will the other dogs get in there?
Right. So 35 is a cushion, and Jenny can probably speak to this in more detail than I can. But I do know that this came up last year, that, I think it was last year, that because of the size of the vehicles and because of the experience of the people that work for her, they do fit quite a number of dogs in there. So I don't know whether, you know, whether it's seven times four makes 28, or exactly how that works. Jenny, maybe you can better answer that question.
Well, the count license also has to cover my personal notes.
Time out. Let's have you do your presentation.
Sure.
Ask you a question and answer it, and then Jen will have you come.
Okay.
We'll just kind of keep it.
She can.
That's okay.
Yep, she can correct. So I think, I think, so first of all, 35 is, you know, a fallback cushion number. And, you know, Jenny lives there and works there. So some of those dogs, I think, actually are, you know, some of them are her dogs, et cetera, so. But I know that they can fit quite a number of dogs in some of the vehicles as a suburban, et cetera.
Yeah, I think you represented last time that the dog owners are not going to be transporting and picking up.
That absolutely, that's absolutely right. The dog owners do not come to the site, except for the open house that was part of the last special permit, which we're actually not requesting this time around, in large part because Salisbury is going to be kind of the, you know, the centerpiece. Oh, I should mention, if I may, because I forgot an important component of this proposal, which is something that was a solution, I hope, that was reached collaboratively. And that is that what we've already begun to do, and Jenny sent letters to all of the neighbors informing that this is something that she, a change that she was making, is that anytime a, one of Seacoast's employees is transporting dogs, the business trips that are countable under the special permit, they will and have, since I believe September, put their hazard lights on their car, and that will make it crystal clear what a countable business trip is. I think as each of the members, or several have commented in September, one of the flaws in the last special permit, and this, you know, this is on me probably in terms of trying to work out a mechanism for verifying compliance, is was the difficulty in determining what's a business trip, what's not a business trip. There were magnets, some magnets flew off, we can form Sam Jost's, or magnets, et cetera. This would be a much simpler, the simplicity of it is actually, you know, I think, the strongest point. Hazard lights on, everybody knows that it's a business trip. The employees know and have now have, you know, close to two full months of experience doing this, that as soon as they hit Downfall Road, hazards go on. There's a 20 mile an hour speed limit, so the hazard lights are also conducive to the idea of driving very slow, which, believe me, Jenny has hammered that home to all of her people as well. And so that should make it, that should take a lot of the mystery out about what's a business trip versus, you know, a friend of Jenny's coming, a family member, or someone who's simply going to a different property down the street, including the property that's shared or driving with Jenny. So that's another part of our proposal, that replacement of the magnet notion would be continuing the practice, which my understanding is to work pretty well of the hazard lights.
Do you anticipate any point in the future when the entire operation will be in Salisbury or somewhere else outside?
So Jenny can speak to that more authoritatively when she speaks, but my understanding is that at some point within the next, you know, two to three years, the idea would be that almost all of it would be in Salisbury, and that what is occurring in Newbury would fit, would be so scaled back that it would fit within a home occupation type of situation, or something along those lines. I mean, Jenny has a lot of dogs herself, it's a big property, it's a farm. She's got goats, cats, chickens. Yeah. You name it, she's got it for, you know, for various animals there. So there are going to be dogs there, but I think it's fair to say that within two to three years, is that right, Jenny, that the intention would be that it would be, there would be no more dogs there that are there at the Willworth's house and other places for people who walk dogs for customers in the neighborhood, which are current.
George?
No questions.
Listen, so the question will stop.
No, I don't.
Mm.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Probably have more questions as we get further on discussion and deliberation.
Thanks very much.
Jenny, did you want to come up as part of the advocate to make a presentation?
I can speak now, or if, you know, we can have. Whatever. Jennifer Ford, 35 Downfall Road. I am the owner of Seacoast Canine, and wanted to take a few minutes, I think, just to ensure that some of these points were made clear. I think we did that fairly well in terms of the differences between what we're doing this year and what we're doing in the coming year. Primarily, I just wanted to have the opportunity to say, thinking from a logical perspective, that I have every incentive to follow these terms. I helped create these terms. There are things that I considered to be unreasonable then. I don't consider them to be unreasonable now. I have not intentionally violated any of these terms, but I do recognize that there is no point of compromise for some people in the neighborhood. And so starting our search in May was essentially a year ahead of schedule for me. We did $14,000 of new fencing this year to comply with the permit last year. And so to make a reduction of this size at this point in time, it is really not a business move. It was, you know, to, to hopefully reach compromise in the neighborhood. I do take it very seriously. The one correspondence that Sam sent to us, I think we immediately wanted to rectify the situation. The only instance that was brought to my personal attention in terms of drivers being unsafe, I immediately jumped on. And I guess I do want to apologize, Amanda, because I didn't reach out to let you know. I took it very seriously. I have a lot of little kids in my life that I love a lot. And so that employee heard in no unclear terms what would happen if he was seen driving in an unsafe manner again. And I think the evidence that we haven't had other complaints, no one has contacted me, the town hasn't contacted me. You know, from my end, I thought we were actually doing a really good job. And so it is my plan. We have a two-year lease where we're at now, and at the end of that, I would like to be in a position to purchase or build something that will accommodate all of our clients. And so my plan has always been to have the business eventually not be on the farm. But we do have a really great team. There are people who are not entry level, they are career oriented. We are one of the top businesses in this, you know, industry in our area. And so employment with us comes at a cost. And so I would really urge the board to think, again, logically, we are not going to jeopardize what we built. And so as, you know, to the best of our ability, we want to comply by these terms. I do want to also make sure that my team are treated with respect, that they should not feel unsafe being at work. And the increasing number of incidents that they've been experiencing on our end is becoming concerning. So part of what I would like to see in our permit moving forward is very clear guidelines in terms of what, you know, residents can do if they feel like there is a valid complaint. Our staff have a lot of protocols on our end, but I want to make sure that they feel safe being at work as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions, anything that I didn't cover, but I would like to see in the coming year more mutual respect and boundaries.
Nick, I'll just kind of make some open comments. I know it's been, we went through an extended period of trying to negotiate and make everything work, and sometimes things work smoothly, sometimes they don't. Hopefully, we can get to a point where they're working smoothly and everyone is comfortable. With regards to anyone feeling uncomfortable, or, you know, in that venue, we're not a regulatory board that deals with those sort of things, and there's an department that does that. And, you know, you just pick up a phone if there's a conflict, if there's, you know, an issue that needs resolution, you can have someone there very quickly. And that's why we have enforcement agents to do that. So if there's ever a time or something feels unsafe on either compo, either component, resident, you know, employee, you know, please, that's why we have police. We just give them a call and.
We have documented the police.
And we resolve, call and resolve. That's the key. Okay. So I, I'm excited that you have a Salisbury location going. I think that's wonderful. It's exciting. You can offer an opportunity to expand your business in a different venue. And you're right, and to maybe bring back the, the concept of the neighborhood to what it had been before. So I just, I have a question, because I just want to make sure I understand correctly, because two things that I didn't take into account. So we never, when we talked about trips, we talked about business trips. So employees are part of the business component. When employee leaves, you know, for lunching, goes up and down the street, how do we factor that into our overall trips? Because that kind of throws the needle off a little bit.
And that is, I think that is a gray area that we took into, you know, we took different interpretations. In my mind, I would prefer if my employees are not clocked in and they are not on the clock. I am mandated by the state to give them breaks. I cannot, when they're not clocked in, mandate how they spend those breaks. But my suggestion to them was, I would rather have them go get lunch than have someone, a delivery person, bring lunch to us. Because my staff know the importance of driving safe on Downfall. A teenager delivering pizza does not. And so lunch is going to happen if they don't have lunch. If, you know, if something has to happen, I would rather have them go out than have someone come in. If, moving forward, we decide that business operations trips encompasses a whole day, we can accommodate that. But again, I just, from a safety perspective, would prefer my staff to be the ones driving on the road.
I think that's, I think something that when Martha and I had the opportunity to sit down and meet, that was something that was kind of in our, in our thought process, and I don't know if we ever articulated, but I think it's business related, and if it's going to increase, you know, activity on the road, that needs to be taken into account. Because if we're going to be trying to get our trips down to four, or round trips a day, that's employee involvement. That's, I think, something that you might want to think about in your application process. That's one thing. Okay. Another thing I didn't know is, I didn't know about your goats. And I didn't know about all the interest in goats. And so how do we separate goat people from dog people? Traffic. I have no idea how to do that.
Hazardous.
I didn't know. Well, that's, I think it's that simple. And if that's, you know, if that's the definition, and then anybody else that's going to visit, you know, for goats, or is going to visit, you know, to be a friend, to be over there to walk, I think those probably also need to be well understood, so everybody understands that apples and oranges, so that there's no confusion there. So the hazard lights, your goats. All right. Other questions from the board members?
Not about goats.
All right.
I'm an expert now, so.
I'm going to ask this to you, and you can follow up, probably with an answer. Seems to me on the employees using the road to go for lunch, they're not going on business purposes, they're going on personal purposes. And the road is a way, it's a public street. Even if it's a private way, they can use it without restriction. They have to follow the rules anyway on the road. It's not for business purposes.
I would suggest that what this board regulates is uses related to the business generated pursuant to the special permit. So we're not talking about just a public way accessed by members of the public versus what they're using the way for. It's trips generated by a business that is regulated by virtue of special permits. So whether or not the increase, the delta, if you would, before and after, is somebody who's going out for lunch or somebody coming back and forth with business, I don't know if I would necessarily make that distinction, you generating trips. So if you were doing a traffic study, you know, you wouldn't do it for something this small. But if you were, if you had a site that was generating hundreds and hundreds of trips per day, that would be part of their calculus, I imagine. They find out the use code, they plug it into the calculus, and they determine, you know, the statistical measure for the number of trips. So I don't know if we would go down that far and say that's a business trip and a lunch trip is not. It's all trips generated by the business. But I might analyze it that way.
Just any questions?
I'm just thinking the same way as George, but that answers the question.
Well, that raises a question of what the special permits have in terms of different trips. If any trip going out for lunch is a business trip, I don't know. That raises the same issue.
Can I, would it be helpful just to read the condition? It's condition 10. "There shall be no more than sixty one-way vehicle trips per week total, and no more than twelve one-way vehicle trips per day totaled by non-resident and/or resident employees to and from the property while conducting the 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM weekday business operations." That's what it says.
Could I suggest something on this point? And I think, as Jenny alluded to, and I think as everyone understands, I mean, that this was not thought of last month. And so, as you just said, I mean, it talks about, it defines business operations as uses and activities regulated by this decision, which is circular. I think that the board would be fully within its discretion, and counsel can tell me if he disagrees, to simply say, here are the number of business operations trips which are involving transporting dogs and hazards, and that those exclude lunch trips. Because these employees have to have lunch. Some may stay at the site, some may go out. Some days, there'll be, you know, all four non-resident people there. Some days, there'll be three. Other days, maybe there'll be two. So, I wouldn't want to ask, unless the board insists upon including those personal lunch trips as business trips, which I, which we certainly didn't think was intended by last year's decision. We talked about business operations, and we thought of that as transporting dogs, which is the business Jenny's in. And I don't disagree that you could, you know, certainly that there's a correlation between employees who are there for that purpose, and then they go get lunch. But I do tend to think of it more as a personal thing, particularly since they're off the clock. They're not, they're not working. They're not compensated during lunch, but they're required to be given lunch breaks. So, again, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to necessarily say, oh, now we, you know, we need to go back up to the sixty a week to try to extrapolate and predict how many people are going to have lunch when. I think a simpler solution would be to explicitly exclude lunch trips. And then, the lunch trips are going to be what they're going to be. And Jenny, you know, she'll be in trouble with the Fair Labor Division of the Attorney General's Office if she's forcing people to stay there and not letting them have lunch. And it's a, it's a very modest accommodation for the neighborhood, because people leave their homes and they go get lunch. And so, these people leaving 35 Downfall and some then get lunch, and some may not get lunch. But I think it's hard to predict. And so, I would be reluctant to try to put a number on it and to lump those together with the much more predictable trips. That would be my suggestion, but I recognize the board needs to reach a consensus on it.
Anything else Jenny can say to us?
That's the one I have.
Okay. Thanks. Any additional questions or donation by the board at this point in time? Martha, would you like us to read our comments at this time?
They should be. And here's one that just came in.
All right. So, you ready to list?
I'm going to start with Sam.
I think you're going to start, yes. Probably with Sam, which is going to do this at the back end part. And, thank you very much. So, these are going to be our letters, comment letters that the board has received today. So, we're just going to read those into the record. Thanks.
During this year, I have received a number of complaints regarding the dog daycare located at 35 Downfall Road. The majority of the complaints are regarding the amount of, amount and the speed of traffic relating to the business at 35 Downfall Road. One of the neighbors has supplied me with multiple weeks of logs counting the vehicles in, out, and the color and model of the cars. I have personally spent a dozen or more days on the street counting cars as well. Based on the number of car trips I have logged, the log kept by the neighbor is similar in both count and model of cars traveling the roadway. Very rarely do I see a sign on a car for the dog daycare, which is not to say I do not believe the cars traveling on the road are part of the business. The same cars travel the road multiple times a day and stay for only a few minutes, leading me to believe they are not friends or relatives stopping by. Although, I typically monitor for one hour blocks of a block, and during those blocks by themselves, there is not a violation based on the consistent traffic counts coming from the address at 35 Downfall. I believe the number of car trips allowed per day is being violated. The provision for the number of cars, the provision for the number of cars allowed per day, I'm sorry, property signing of the car, properly signing the cars is not being followed, and the list of cars given to the town indicating that vehicles relate to the business in and out of date.
That was from Sam Josselin. That was August 14th, 2019.
Question?
No, I'm sorry. We're going to just read things into the record at this time. Just give me a sec, please.
Animal Control?
Yep.
Carol McCrokey, Animal Control. I'm not sure.
LaRocque.
Okay. Thank you. "Per our conversation, as instructed by the Newbury Police Department, I spent time monitoring the dog daycare business located at 35 Downfall Road. On four separate occasions, twice in the morning, I parked at the end of Downfall Road to listen to the sound of dogs barking and traffic entering or exiting the business. On none of these occasions did I hear any loud barking or other disturbance by dogs. I also did not see any vehicles entering or leaving the property during my visits. Today, October 30th, 2019, I conducted a state-mandated inspection of the dog daycare facility and noted the following: Outdoor areas are segregated according to dog size, with small and medium-sized dogs in one area and larger dogs in a second area. Each area is closely monitored by at least two employees at all times. Each area was exceptionally clean and well-maintained. According to the owner-operator, the policy is that for up to ten dogs, one monitor is assigned at all times. When the population of dogs increase past ten, a second monitor is also assigned. I was very pleased, I was very impressed by the skill level and close supervision by monitors of the dogs. The monitors were fairly aware of dog interactions in order to intervene should a scuffle break out. I saw no sign of trouble. Overall, I was impressed by the operation and saw no issues of concern. I hope this report provides the information that you need. Please contact me if you need any further detail." This is the latest one? Okay. This is Kathleen Leahy, 10 Lenway Road, Byfield. "To the planning board, I continue to have concerns regarding the increased amount of traffic on Downfall Road caused by Seacoast Canine business at 35 Downfall Road. I walk alone or with friends and neighbors on Downfall twice a day with my dog. My son, who has been blind for the last seven years, also often walks the neighborhood and has noticed an increase in traffic and speed. My family and I are concerned about the safety of walking in our neighborhood. It's difficult to know how the precautions put in place by the board, when the business was first approved, are being monitored. I appreciate the board hearing my family's concerns. Respectfully, Kathleen Leahy."
Okay. So, what we did was, we received concerns, and then we received letters of support.
Right.
And so, there was actually a letter of concern. And so, let's, if we continue through our packet, you're going to see, they'll start with planning board, kind of, 10, 12, is this one here? And so, what we'll do is, these are the letters of support, and then you're going to get to a separating page, which will be letters of concern. So, that last one, we just looked at, was a letter of concern. So, let's go through this packet here.
Okay.
Thanks.
If I can get that under that.
Yep. And letting you just read. Yeah. Thanks very much. We love shuffling paper here.
Dear members, this is dated September 12th, 2019. Dear members, I would like to address the situation at 35 Downfall Road, namely the dog care business owned by Jen Ford. I can honestly say the business has not created any issues for me. Traffic has not been an issue. I also would like to address implications recently implied as to Jen Ford's character. I have known the family for over thirty years. They are a well-respected family with strong moral values. As to remarks they couldn't possibly have that much traffic from family and friends, I strongly disagree, as I have personally witnessed their family gatherings. They are a tight-knit family and are magnets for friendships. As a resident, I look at what the possibilities are for that site as of right, as of right possibilities. And it could be far worse. I was recently in a traffic jam at a vegetable stand. I feel they offer a needed service for the town and hope we can encourage them to continue. Respectfully, Evelyn, Evelyn Neis, 5 Downfall Road. 10/22/19. "To whom it may concern, as residents of Byfield, Mass. and business owners of the Grock Restaurant in neighboring Newburyport, we can't express how valuable of a local service Jenny Ford and Seacoast Canine provide. My wife and I rely on the services that Seacoast Canine provides for about six hours a week, so our chocolate lab can get some supplemental exercise while we are busy working. It is extremely important to us that our dog is cared for by this local, small, and very experienced team of professionals. We have met the group of trainers and feel very comfortable while our dog, who is our child, is with them. Sincerely, Nicole and Bill Nickelman, 65 Orchard Street." This one is dated October 22. "Members of the planning board, we'd like to share our experience with you regarding Seacoast Canine. The small staff of the company is phenomenal, as is the service they offer. They are conveniently located at the farm, allowing them to pick up and drop off pets of Newbury and Byfield families. Our puppy attends Tuesdays and Thursdays for four to six hours. She receives training and playtime with other dogs. She is almost two, and because of the services she receives at this local business, she has the skill to be around adults and children around town. Our family is grateful to the staff of Seacoast Canine. They serve the community, teaching dogs to be exemplary citizens. Sincerely, Kim and Scott Richards, 86 Central Street." October 22, 2019. "I am a taxpayer in Byfield and also a client at Seacoast Canine on Downfall Road. My dog attends their training camp on Fridays for four hours. Because the facility is in Byfield, allows her to be picked up and dropped off by the faculty staff. I have had experience with dog daycare, and it was unpleasant experience due to the lack of training by the staff. This is not the case with Seacoast Canine, which is why I switched. I believe they are an invaluable asset to the town of Newbury and hope to see their business continue here. Janet McElazian, 6 Central Street."
Do you want to move to page six?
Sure.
Thanks. Let's see. Okay. This is from Rebecca Mountain, dated 23rd, 23rd of October. "Dear members of the planning board, I am reaching, I am reaching out to you today in support of my good friend Jenny Ford, who I have known for a better part of thirty years. She is currently applying for a special permit for her business on Downfall Road renewed. I spoke in support of her permit last year at one of your meetings, and I understand that there are some residents on Downfall Road continuing to object to her business on the grounds that it creates too much traffic. As a lifetime resident of Byfield, I think I'll be here nearly thirty-two years this November, and a frequent visitor to Jenny's house, I can say with absolute certainty that these residents are either ill-informed or intentionally mischaracterizing the quality of traffic generated by the business. As a close friend, I visit Jenny at all hours of the day throughout the week, both during business hours and on weekends. And while I occasionally see another vehicle on Downfall Road, perhaps only once or twice in the past year, it's been an employee of Jenny's. The majority of the cars I see come, come from the side street, Johnson Lane, or from farther up Downfall Road. I think it's a, I think a formal study by the town was conducted that would confirm my observations. As I mentioned, I am a resident of Byfield. My father served in town politics for many years. I've attended the Yellow School as a child with Jenny, just a few minutes from where she now lives. And I have lived on Locken my entire life, Locken Road on my entire life. I too have noticed an increase in traffic on my own street over the years, as new houses have been built or enlarged, and families have expanded from single-car families to two- to three-car families or beyond. My dad, and I used to make a joke about how many times we saw another car on Locken Road. Now, it's the norm. The signs of the changing socio-demographics of our town have consequences. Byfield is now far wealthier than it was when my parents first moved here, which is likely for the better. There are no longer trailer homes or collapsing houses on my old bus route. But it means that there are more people here now with more money and more cars. I would urge the residents of Downfall Road to recognize that these changes in traffic they see are not unique to Downfall Road and not a result of their neighbors providing a valuable service to the town, but rather a result of a change in fabric of Byfield, which brings with its positives and negatives. Thank you for your time and attention. Sincerely, Becky Mountain, 9 Locken Road." Next will be from Jesse Allen. "Hello, my name is Jesse Allen. I am Jenny Ford's friend. I'm an employer client. Jenny and I raise goats together. I come and go from the farm on all hours, depending on what my goats need. I have friends and family that come and go as help, as well as help us out." Jesse Allen. This will be from Jack Kelly, dated 24th of October. "Dear planning board, we are a longtime resident of Byfield, Triton class of 1975. We are writing in support of Jenny Ford and her small staff at Seacoast Canine. Our dog is with Jenny for about four to six hours per day, a few days a week. We deal with the same three or four staff members. I don't think they have any more personnel. They provide a low-impact, appropriately rural use for the farm at the end of Downfall Road. They are considered polite and have family benefits from the quality of care they provide. We encourage you to continue working with Seacoast Canine as we intend to."
Okay. This was received on October 27, 2019. "Dear planning board, I would like to write in support of Seacoast Canine, an invaluable service to me and my family and, of course, my dog, Olive. My one-year-old lab is learning to be a good citizen a few times a week under the tutelage of Jenny Ford and her small friendly staff. She typically attends camp Tuesdays and Thursdays. Olive is not my first dog, but I find Seacoast to be unique, to be unique in that she is typically picked up around 9:30 and returned home by 2:30. Beyond the convenience of pickup, Olive has bonded with the three or four people who work there as trainers. I admire the care and professionalism Seacoast provides for the few hours that Olive and her friends attend camp. We feel lucky to have found such an impressive business in our small community. Best, Karen Gold." This is dated October 30th, 2019. "Hello, Martha Taylor, Gail J. White, and James R. Carey. How sent you a message via your contact form at the town of Newbury. In reference to the renewal of permits for Seacoast Canine on Downfall Road, we are unable to attend the meeting tonight, but wanted to advise the planning board that we have no issues whatsoever with Jen Ford and Seacoast Canine. We live directly across the street from them at 36th Downfall Road. We have had no negative impact with this business being here. Her staff and customers come and go without concern. We never hear the dogs barking or have been, or have seen any dogs causing concern. Feel free to email with This is a concern.
So, the next ones you'll be reading will be individuals that have expressed concern. That's the first one we read. Thanks.
Yes. This is dated October 28, 2019. "Dear Martha, as my husband Doug and I cannot attend the public hearing scheduled for October 30th in regards to the renewal and possible expansion of liberties granted via special permit to Seacoast Canine located at 35 Downfall Road, we would like to air our concerns to the planning board via this message. Since the initial approval for the special permit to operate a home-based dog care and training facility in a residential neighborhood, we have noticed a much greater number of vehicles entering and leaving Downfall Road. We cannot specifically state that they all belong to Seacoast Canine, as the vehicles are not identifiable by signage. However, many a time, we have noticed that the vehicles have dogs as passengers, and the drivers tend to be more attuned to the animals rather than the road." the drivers tend to be more attuned to the animals rather than the road. Our home is on the corner of Johnson Lane and Downfall, and for this reason, our four grandchildren, whom we provide daycare, are not allowed to play in the yard at certain times of day for fear of the traffic and/or inattentive drivers. We really don't feel this is fair to our family in a residential neighborhood in which we have lived for the past thirty-four years. Because of the lack of signage, our vehicles, on vehicles, and a number of vehicles running trips throughout each weekday, we have witnessed some weekends. We just don't believe Ms. Ford has operated under the guidelines of the original permit that was granted and desperately hope that the planning board will implement more guidelines and oversight for this business. Thank you for your time and consideration. Respectfully, Linda and Doug Day. October thirtieth, twenty nineteen. Members of the planning board, it is obvious that this has been a difficult situation for the planning board as well as the residents of Downfall Road. Thank you for the time you have given in considering the issue and for the time you give on a day-to-day basis for our town. I believe it would be helpful to have the Board of Selectmen present for this issue. It seems to me that this process has altered the definition of residential street/road in our town and could present more problems down the road for the town as it sets a precedent. Are there other situations in residential neighborhoods where a business has been added? If there aren't any, it makes this situation all the more reasonable to keep from being the first as it could lead to other residential neighborhoods with a similar challenge. What if someone wanted to open a hair salon or nail salon or on Rolle Slane or on the street where you live? Downfall Road is not just a residential road. As you know, it is a dead end with only one way in and one way out. It is also a very narrow road. The amount of added traffic is a challenge. As a residential road, if you count the number of houses, there would be a reasonable limit to the number of cars traveling back and forth in a day. But with a business, this obviously increases. And if this business grows or changes in the future, it could become even worse. I have lived in our house since nineteen sixty-four. I raised four children on this wonderful road. The neighborhood has been fortunate. The past year used to welcome some families with young children. Certainly, the safety of those children should be of the utmost importance. I don't believe this is a decision that should be made by a few. It is a bigger decision with future ramifications that need to be considered, not only by the planning board, but by the Board of Selectmen as well. Sincerely, Joanne Hogan.
So this is the correspondence that the planning board has received to date in support of a special permit and concerns in special permit. Women, does anyone have any questions on what we've received so far?
At this point, no.
Okay. So at this time, what I'd like to do is I'd like to open this up for questions from the community to, and I just, if, I don't know if I need to put any guidelines other than we'd like to keep our comments of the candidates brief as possible. If this can suffice, please come to the microphone, identify yourself, and where you live, and if you're open mouthed, whoever would like to come up, please feel free. Come on up.
My name is Frank Bertolino. I'm a resident, ten Maple Terrace here in Newbury, which is a dead end, and I also am Jenny's realtor. I've been working with Jenny for well over six months, feverishly looking for a good location for her to start the process of moving along. She is conscientious. She is really concerned about her neighbors. Otherwise, she would not have got to be kind and expensive that she has. I feel that, we spoke many times, many times, about what goes on with her business here in Byfield, and it came from her heart. She's really, like, as I mentioned, conscientious. I feel she should be given continued chance. As she has stated, that her plan is to eventually move along, move the business out of there, and we are already in the process because it's a long process, looking for a larger location for her. But as I stated, it's a long process. It's not something, it is not something that's going to happen overnight. So I just want to speak in favor of Jenny and her employees, and I just hope that the board takes everything into consideration and continues to give her a chance. Thank you.
Amanda Cannon, thirty-two Downfall Road. I have three kids that live not really across the street, kind of kitty-corner from them. There's a few things that kind of get me. They have a black SUV that is registered to the company. I get to my bus stop at three P.M. In their old one and their new one, it says that they will not drive past two or three every single day, except for Friday because I have a babysitter, so I can't vouch for Friday. That black SUV waves to me at the bus stop as they drive by. They know that they're driving by past the time, whether it's while I'm at the bus stop, whether it's as the kids are getting off the bus. Like, this is blatant disregard to the rules. You can't say that she's adhering to all of the things. You can't say that she's not. It's every single day, he's driving by, he waves, then he leaves. It's your brother most of the time. Now, your brother is a resident of Byfield, correct?
He lives at, he has to come home.
Correct, that's fine. That's fine. My question is...
Your pivot presented.
Okay, so he drives, he's lived there for many months. He still drives a New Hampshire licensed big car. He's not a resident of Massachusetts. He's not a resident of Byfield. He's not paying excise tax. He's not, so he can't be counted as a resident when he doesn't follow those guidelines. Those are the state law. There's been an incident, there's a new car, it's a Jeep Wrangler. The other, last Wednesday night, my mom was driving home after tennis with my children in the car. Tennis gets over at five, they went and grabbed dinner, they're driving home. This car, with the signs on the vehicle, drove past my mom at quarter to six at night. That's a company vehicle with signage, driving at six o'clock at night, to the point where my mom had to pull over to the side of the road because that car wasn't stopping. It's just a huge concern, and in the first one, it states, just like you guys read, six people, including residents. So now they want to move down to four people that aren't residents. That's the same amount of people as employees as it is in the first thing because it says residents and non-residents. And same with the trips. All trips are. And if you're not going to count the lunch trips, those are people driving on our road that would not be driving on our road if that business was not there. They would not be driving from the end of a dead-end road out and back to get lunch. My kids are at home on spring break, vacations. They're trying to walk to the bus stop, and Jenny, every single day, is leaving at eight forty-five. She's a resident, I understand, but in the saying, it states that business can't be conducted until after the kids get on the bus. Every single day, on our way to the bus stop, Jenny is driving. So now it's to the point where my kids, I drive my kids to the bus stop because I can't have my ten-year-old and my five-year-old and my autistic eight-year-old walking as cars are going up and down the road. And I understand, I've never had an issue with Jenny's speed or anything like that personally, herself, but it's blatant disregard to what you and her set up as guidelines. So what's to say that those aren't going to continue? She's going up for reevaluation right now, and it's still continuing. I thought after September, that three o'clock trip would stop. Nope, it still hasn't. Interrupts my kids going home from school every single day, and I just don't get how that's going to be monitored or enforced by you guys. Do you guys have a way to enforce those or...
We're taking information right now.
Right, I understand, but we've had that meeting from Sam, that paper from Sam, for many a month, dating.
So I can tell you the board is not an enforcing board?
I'm aware of that. I've had, I've called the police because of the traffic and because of people not stopping at the bus stop all the time.
That's what you should do.
And it still happens. I have never seen a police officer at that bus stop in the afternoon, and I've called, I think, six times in the past, like, last three months of school and already this year. So that's what I don't understand. Yeah, they have it on record. They have, they know who it is when I call. But yeah, that's my, I don't know the cars, I don't know the things, but the timing itself is not being adhered to. Thank you.
Someone else thought about it?
I just have a question. Let's have one here. How many dogs in a...
Please come up and identify yourself and introduce yourselves to the microphone. Thanks. So again, we're taking questions and comments right now.
John Robertson, seven, one-way road. How many dogs in each car that is transporting the dogs? How many?
So the thing is, we're not, you're not to ask questions, you're to kind of make comments to us. So we're gathering information.
My observation is there are too many dogs in the car. You don't know how they'll be strained. I don't think it's safe for the driver with children on the road, blind person, some people that are a little slow, all right? The attention factor is... So I want to see something done about this. I don't even know how the dogs are restrained, do you? That's all I have to say at the moment.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Peter, would it be beneficial if I answered the questions every...
No, no. So we're just taking information right now. The board is collecting information. So thank you.
Before I start reading my thing...
Just please identify yourself and your address, please.
Elizabeth Woodworth, nineteen Downfall. But I did, I was sort of maybe not paying attention, but I thought I heard my name mentioned by the lawyer, and I'm just curious of what he's just said because it sounded like a little bit of accusation, but I don't know. I mean, when should I ask what he's just said about it?
So what I'd like you to do, if possible, is present information to the board. That's what we're trying to do tonight, is collect information.
Okay, at what point can I find out what he just said?
Probably when you get done talking to him. If you want to turn around and ask him, you can do that. Thanks.
Hello, neighbors and Newbury planning board. It is with great reluctance that I stand here in opposition of the renewal of Seacoast Canine LLC's special permit issued on November thirteenth, twenty eighteen. I say that only because Jen Ford, owner of Seacoast Canine's business, also lives on Downfall Road and is a neighbor. Our neighborhood is a tight-knit one where people have established long-term friendships and cohabitate easily with one another. We are also a neighborhood that does not hesitate to speak out to our neighbors when certain activities are bothersome to them. Issues are addressed civilly and respectfully, and people continue forward in a positive way. My husband Avery and I are no different as neighbors. We moved here twenty-six years ago with two small children, and shortly thereafter had a third child. Our activities raising the family till our children moved out after college included renovating and expanding our house, erecting an antique barn, and finally giving a home to multiple dogs, cats, horses, donkeys, goats, sheep, chickens, rabbits, and large parrot, who we know have been noisy and probably disruptive on more than one occasion. We tried our best to keep the noise down and the animals contained as best we could and to address any complaints about our activities here at nineteen Downfall. Downfall Road is a narrow old street dating back to some of the oldest-known history of Newbury. It previously went all the way towards Newburyport, where there were churches that Byfielders attended. When Interstate ninety-five was built, it cut Downfall Road into two, and on the west side of the highway where we live, it ended in a dead end. This is where Seacoast Canine, thirty-five Downfall Road, is located. Ask anyone who lives in our neighborhood, the highway is noisy and in an easterly wind, very noisy. However, because ninety-five does not actually physically touch us to harmless, we cut up with the noise in order to live on our cluster of three dead-end streets. In the past, our streets have been quiet, peaceful streets to walk and live on, mainly because they are all dead ends and serve only the residents who live here. Some people are retired, some work from home, most work out at locations away from their homes. On Downfall Road, there are ten houses total. Out of those ten, six homes are multi-generational, and three of the homes have three generations living there. We figured out that in the three streets of our neighborhood, the average length of time people have lived in their homes is twenty-two years. People like living here, and I think it's no surprise that the safety and quietness of our streets are a big reason why people tend to live here way past the national average. Two years ago, thirty-five Downfall changed hands and everything changed. Suddenly, there was a large increase in traffic and car speeding, many of them carrying dogs, all going into thirty-five Downfall. I personally called Martha Taylor, the town planner, to ask if she knew about doggy daycare going in at thirty-five Downfall Road. She said yes, the town is working with a new owner of the property to come up with a plan. Finally, in July twenty-eighteen, there was a special permit hearing for Seacoast Canine LLC, close to a year since they had moved in. Many neighbors attended the meetings, or a series of them, over the summer and fall. Majority of residents had problems with the proposal of a commercial business going in at thirty-five Downfall, a residentially zoned neighborhood. These were some of our concerns. Number one, Downfall, Johnson, Lenway are all dead-end streets. Two, Downfall Road is a very narrow street with a blind spot below a hill where in the recent past, a child was hit by a car while he was bicycling. Three, the proposed business is at the far end of this narrow dead end. All traffic coming into the business must travel the full length of the road and leave the way they came in. That meant every house on the street is impacted, as well as the neighbors on Lenway and Johnson, whose roads stump out onto Downfall Road before reaching Church Street. It was called a home business, yet it was stated that they employed eleven people and had over three hundred clients. Despite the neighbors' concerns and protests, the special permit was granted on November thirteenth, twenty eighteen. In the content of the special permit was the wording, quote, "must be strictly adhered to," meaning that all of the conditions put forth must be followed to the exact language. We all assumed that was going to at least limit impact on our neighborhood. Since November thirteenth, twenty eighteen, and really much before that, but at least since the issuing of the special permit, there has been a constant stream of traffic to thirty-five Downfall Road. Part of the permit limited the hours of operation to nine A.M. to two P.M. on weekdays only, no holidays or weekends. Avery and I live at nineteen Downfall, closer to the dead end, so every car that drives to thirty-five Downfall goes by my house and leaves by my house. I can also see the cars inside my house easily. When you live on a dead-end street with only ten houses, you know all of the cars' colors and make. I know that Seacoast is not complying with the hours of the operation and days, including weekends and holidays. And then there is the traffic. They were allowed four, four, non-resident employees a day to work. Six round trips of vehicles a day. It seemed way more than that to me, and I asked Sam Johnson, the zoning enforcement officer, to check. I believe he sent a report of violations with regards to lack of signage of vehicles, hours violations, a number of vehicle trips violations in March. However, traffic hours and days of business kept on not being strictly adhered to over the summer and into the fall. I also believe Sam Johnson issued a second complaint in August with more violations in regards to traffic hours and vehicle signage. Seacoast Canine LLC is also instructed to submit a list of all vehicles associated with the business. There was a list provided in January listing four vehicles, and finally, an updated one on September ninth, twenty nineteen. Both lists do not reflect the accurate number of vehicles used for the business. Again, I live where every car passes my house. It's not hard to figure out. Today, I did a count of all the traffic going by my house today. That would be today. There are four houses on Downfall past my house. Three of the houses are occupied by people that work outside of their homes and generally leave the neighborhood by six-thirty to eight-thirty A.M. So I do have a list. And curiously enough, from eight oh nine, when the black suburban left the neighborhood, and three thirty-one, when the black suburban returned, there were twenty-two cars that came by on Downfall. Every single one of them were related to the business. There were no resident cars. The only other cars were animal control, which you mentioned, because she came to my house too, for the yearly checkup that she does, because I have animals, the UPS truck, the post office truck, and an oil delivery truck. So that's twenty-two cars, all related to thirty-five Downfall. Maybe she said they were going out to lunch, maybe they were visiting her goats, but this is what I know, and they're all cars that are easily, you know, they either had signs, or they're flashing their lights, or whatever. So, I know last year, the lawyer specified that, like, it was going to be a minimal impact on our neighborhood, but I don't know what twenty-two cars is in that period of time, but it's like a thousand percent increase in traffic. So, you can see why, as neighbors, it's a bit of a shock to go from, literally, nobody going down the street from eight-ten until three o'clock, and then every single car is related to the business. So, I provided one of these for-
For Martha?
Anyway, and it's still closed.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to address the board at this time? Ron?
Cameron Harris, I live on Lenway Road. I'm not, obviously, directly impacted having, living on Downfall, but the neighborhood in general, as Elizabeth alluded to or confirmed, is that the neighborhood has always had sort of a flavor to it, which has been a very quiet, tranquil, safe neighborhood, where we could raise our families, walk our dogs, drive safely in our neighborhood. And, safety, I'm a nurse, safety is my primary concern with my patients, with my family, with my neighbors, with our animals. It definitely has impacted the safety of all the residents in the neighborhood. Increase in traffic, the potential accidents that have been reported in the past, near incidences of people having to jump out of the road and things like that. I'm happy and certainly don't want to crush Jen's dream of having this business, but maybe in the first place, a residential neighborhood such as ours wasn't the right place to have that business be started. It's there now. Of what benefit is it to the residents of the neighborhood to allow something like that? Of what benefit is it to the town to have that business be at the end of Downfall Road? I'm happy to hear that she's moving forward with the Salisbury location, but in the meantime, we are day-to-day impacted by that business, more so on Downfall, but the neighborhood in general. Neighboring businesses such as the fertility business over the highway, people walk from there on their breaks down into our neighborhood, because it has been a safe neighborhood to walk in. I think, we all know that, we all see that. They walked across the highway, they come into our neighborhood, because it is a safe place. People have seen a change, and people who used to walk their dogs in our neighborhood no longer walk their dogs in our neighborhood. We don't care about dog walking in our neighborhood, we care about the traffic flow, the safety of our neighborhood. As I said, that quiet, tranquil, safe place we used to live in is no longer the same safe place it used to be. And I don't know if anybody here has ever been into our neighborhood, that would be really interesting to know, how many people have actually driven back there. Most people don't even know it's there if they don't live there, which is the way it always has been. And the only other question I have, coming from a health perspective. There is a porta potty, permanent porta potty that lives on the property down there, and I was curious as to what that's in relation to. If there's, I mean, we have septic systems. I was just curious, is the porta potty for humans, is it for dog waste? What is that amount of dog waste? What happens with that dog waste? I mean, I'm talking a health perspective, as a nurse. Those are concerns I have too, as to what happens with all that dog waste? Where does it go? Is there a mechanism of disposal? And again, why is there a long-term porta potty? I don't know, I mean, you usually see my construction sites or sports fields, but in a residential neighborhood? That's my question.
Anyone else?
I'd like a short and sweet, Avery Woodworth, Nineteen Downfall. My biggest thing is, all this stuff has been pretty much gone over. You guys issued a special permit, okay? It's a privilege, it's not a right. There's no guarantees here. The special permit said strict adherence to the guidelines of the special permit, which I think we've documented pretty well as to not really happening. So I guess, I think it's, I'm happy that she's moving to Salisbury, I mean, working on going to Salisbury. I think that's a fantastic decision, because I would like to see nothing more than see all that traffic in my neighborhood. I love and problem with dogs, I've never had an issue with the dogs. It's the traffic. So, that's really the biggest thing, is that it's a special permit, it's not a right, it's not a privilege. It's a, I mean, it is a privilege, it's not a given, so.
Anyone else who wants to make a comment? Come on back up to your real quick.
It is, okay. A man in Cannon, thirty-two, Downfall Road. So I was at a soccer game, speaking with somebody. They're like, "Oh, so where do you live?" I said, "Downfall Road." They're like, "Oh, that's where the awesome canine place is." I said, "Yeah, they're right down at the end of the road." He goes, "Oh yeah, so I drove by a couple times before I sent my dog there." That's something that you, unfortunately, you're not promoting, she's not saying, "Oh, come drive by and see the place." But nobody's going to send their dog to a daycare and pay for a daycare for a dog without checking out the facility, driving by. That's added traffic that she's not promoting, she's not, on her website it doesn't say, "Oh, come by and see." But putting a commercial business at the end of a dead-end road, they're going to come by to see. So those are cars that we don't know, that don't, that aren't even calling her to say, "Oh, can I come by?" So she can give them the fair warning of, "You better drive slow, my neighbors will yell at you." Because that's a fair warning! But unfortunately, she doesn't even have that option to give them, because it, her address is on websites, it's on Facebook, and they're driving by to say, "Oh, well, I'm looking at daycare, so I want to see what this facility looks like." And unfortunately, those are, again, trips that if a commercial business wasn't at the end of my road, I wouldn't have to worry about my three kids playing in the street, or the driveway, or riding their bikes. Just wanted to, that was the story that I- Forgot that one.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Heather Coney, and I grew up on Longwood Road in Byfield. I'm not currently a Byfield resident, so I don't know if I'm allowed to talk. Okay. So, Jenny and I have been friends for almost thirty years. Sorry, I get nervous in public speaking situations. I just, listening to everybody's concerns, kind of wanted to, well, first of all, about, obviously, for Jenny, and how hard she's been working, and I know that she's been trying to do everything that she possibly can to make everybody happy. I think in a situation like this, everybody won't be happy, and that's the definition of good compromise, I guess, but she has been working tirelessly. Based on people's concerns, the points made regarding when Jenny comes back, goes back and forth, and when her brother goes back and forth, kind of bothered me a little bit, because they live in that house, and I don't think that anybody should be regulated when they can come back and forth from their own home. We don't know for a fact why they're going back and forth, if they have appointments, or if they're meeting with friends for coffee every morning, or whatnot, and I don't think that it's fair to try to bully somebody in their own home. Next, regarding the breaks and forcing people, or I've heard comments stating, "Well, they should bring their lunch." Okay, well, if they're not being paid to be on break, and a break is mandated by the law, then making them stay there, I think technically would be maybe considered kidnapping. They can't, she can't force people to stay at work if they're not being paid. So, regarding the back-and-forth trips, I think, I mean, I do understand if the business wasn't there, then the break trips wouldn't be happening in the first place, but I think maybe either a compromise can be made, stating either leaving those trips out of the total amount of trips, or greatly increasing the number of trips. People do a lot of things on their lunch breaks, they make appointments, even appointments that have to do with their children, personal appointments, they do lunch. But, I just, I think it's kind of absurd to require that they stay on-site for their lunch break that they're not being paid for. Lastly, regarding the count of cars that went back and forth on the road today, it was stated that it was known that all of these cars were business-related trips. I don't know how that could be known. How we could know that those weren't friends going to visit Jenny, or, as was stated when it, when your statement was being made, that they weren't people going to see the goats, or whatnot, so I was just pushing it as-
This, this, this is very-
Yes. So, I, those are my primary flags that went up, that I just wanted to make sure that I said something about, and hopefully represented my good friend. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to make a comment?
I do. Okay, eight o'clock, Black Suburban. It's a company car.
What I'm going to do is, we, we have the information, Martha has the record of your log, and I'm appreciative. It's just that we're heading towards nine-thirty at this point in time, and this board has been meeting since quarter of seven. And, we have the information, and I appreciate the information. What I don't want to do is, I don't want to inflame the situation. I just want people to present information. That's what tonight's about, it's about presenting information, and just keeping everything cool. So I have the information, and I thank you.
Okay.
So if there's new information you want to present, please, please do.
I just don't appreciate that I'm an honest person. I would never accuse somebody of something that's not something that I've observed, so.
I appreciate that as well. Would anyone else like to, come on up?
I am Dori Rosati. I am a former resident of Downfall Road. I now live in Amesbury. I'm also an employee of Jenny's, but also her best friend, and we have known each other for over thirteen years. I was, I guess, two of those trips today, on the twenty-two, so just speaking of the, we know that those are all business trips. Yes, I am an employee of Jenny's, but I was not there for business purposes. I also drove there today, so we could come up to this meeting. So, I am in and out, and while I am a trainer, I train off-site, I am not working at the farm. I do not do any business there. If I am ever filling in for a staff member who is on vacation, and I'm transporting dogs, I have my flashers on to indicate that. So just adding into the, there's twenty-two trips, I get that that happened today, I will admit that I was two of those. I was stopping by to let Jenny's dog, who recently had surgery, out to pee, as a friend, because Jenny was busy at the Salisbury location. I would encourage you guys to get more information from Jenny if you have questions and concerns, and I'm happy to answer anything as well.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to make a comment to the board? Avery, come on up, real quick.
I just-
New information, new information, that's all we're looking for.
Compromise. We're not really interested in compromise, because it was a special permit. You guys changed the condition of our situation with the special permit and with Jenny moving in. There's, compromise is, it's not what's supposed to be happening here, it's our community, it's our neighborhood, it's not the rest of the town.
New information? I don't want to do rebuttals, I just want information.
Okay, well, these, these would be-
Please step up then.
Yes. There is one piece of new information. The rebuttal I will refrain from-
Thank you.
Which relates to business trips versus not business trips. But the new information, although it's not new information, from what I said to the board last year, but I think it's important, is on this issue of the things that are allowed either as a right or by permit, or not allowed at all, within the residential agricultural district, which includes Downfall Road. So, Mrs. Hogan talked about hairdressing salons and so on. Those aren't permitted. We recognize this is a special permit, it's a discretionary permit, but the bylaws of the town say specifically that daycare for animals are permitted by a special permit, obviously that's why we're here. So it's not some, you know, radical notion that someone could apply for in the residential agricultural district to do this work. And the board, last year, obviously issued it with conditions and so on. But I just want to state that, in terms of, for anybody in the room who's unfamiliar with the zoning bylaws in the town, that this is permitted by discretionary permit. There are a number of things that are not permitted, including some of the things that have been mentioned that are forbidden within this district. And then there are things that are allowed as a right, which include a feed store, which include a farm stand, retail farm stand, which include daycare under the Dover Amendment for the state, other kinds of things. So, the idea that there could only ever be single-family residential uses on this street is incorrect. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board? Any comments or discussion by board members?
I'd like to ask council questions.
Sure.
What do you say to the suggestion that was made, that you're proposing four round trips per day for non-resident employees? Is that correct?
That is what we're proposing this year, four round trips for non-resident employees.
And right now, you've got six round trips for resident and non-resident employees, so is that really a compromise?
Well, I think so, so we're cutting down the number of trips, I mean, that's where we-
Except you're not, because now, under your proposal, I'm not trying to be argumentative, I'm not-
Yeah.
I, I think you're coming from, you know, a place where you want to compromise. But my point is, then, the number of trips for resident employees are unlimited, under your proposal.
The number of trip, well, so the number of general trips for resident employees are unlimited, as they're unlimited for any resident at Downfall Road, with regard to-
I'm talking about business trips.
Right, no, that's what we, we're, that's what we understood the permit to be regulating currently, and what we understand a renewed permit would regulate, business trips. So when Christian, you know, when he leaves in the Black Suburban in the morning, that Ms. Cannon talked about, he's, he lives there, and he's going and doing something else. He might be going to pick up dogs, I don't, you know, I'm not familiar with exactly what Christian's role is, but he lives there, he's in a company vehicle that happens to have the signs on it that can't be removed. Those are not countable trips. So he can come and go as he pleases, he lives there, as can Jenny. And guests can come and go as they please, just like they can come and go as they please at any resident of this street. However, to answer your question, we had business operations trips, which we have always understood to mean the transporting of dogs, which is the new activity that was introduced to the neighborhood, the transporting of dogs. That, that's what's regulated. And so we're saying that we would, we wish to cap, based on this transition to Salisbury, that we wish to cap the overall number of business operations trips to forty from sixty. So that would be, you know, overall. As with last year, if Jenny or Christian, who live there now, and last year it was Jenny and Dori who lived there, if they're engaging in business operations trips, those count. And the way that that can be distinguished, I think in a more understandable and verifiable way going forward, is the hazard light flasher thing. So, if Jenny is transporting dogs, which I don't believe is often the case, but if she happens to be, or if Christian happens to be, the flashes are on, that's part of the forty. So it is a one-third reduction from sixty to forty, and I think it helps erase some of the more difficult distinctions that to draw about resident and non-resident, because if the residents are doing business operations trips, those count. And they counted before, they count now, and we're asking, and we're saying we'll reduce them by a third because of this transition to Salisbury.
I think with the discussion, highlights the difficulty really of determining the difference between business trips and personal trips, and people who are visiting goats, or whatever else is, you know, going on there. And, and as far as the flashing lights go, it's a fine idea, but it's basically self-policing. I mean, if someone doesn't put their blinkers on, it doesn't help us. And, and, don't get me wrong, I, I would like to see some way to monitor this, in hindsight being twenty-twenty, you know, in hindsight, that this was probably not a very workable scheme, I'm sure of the time.
Well, as far as monitoring goes, so-
As far as, that's what I meant.
Yes, so obviously, you know, Mr. Jocelyn is the primary person who monitors it. He, in the, I believe in the wintertime, it was within three or four months of when the special permit was granted, notified us of some of the logs that the neighbors have been keeping, and some of his own observations. We asked for the logs, I think I've- I think I've, I've submitted this to, I believe to Martha, I'm not sure. It was a long time ago, so I'm not sure that the board members have seen it. But we, we went point by point, you know, as far as license plates. And we said, these ones, yes, are, are, are Seacoast Canine. These ones, we have no idea, nor should Jenny have to keep track of who her, you know, five homeowners that live at that end of the street, one of whom shares a driveway with her, who's coming and going. That shouldn't be a burden placed on her. And yet, what I'm hearing tonight is that many of the ills that people are saying exist on Downfall Road are, are Jenny's fault. So she's clearly responsible for every uptick in traffic on Downfall Road, according to what I've been hearing tonight. And it's just not um, the type of evidence of what has actually been occurring that respectfully the board should be focused on. There's a lot of speculation. And I, I lost my train, of Sam Jocelyn. So we responded to particular logs, sent that to him, tried to draw the distinction between business and non-business. And that submission uh, that we sent in demonstrated, I thought pretty clearly, that there really weren't any verifiable um, violations at that, at that point. Now, to your point about it's, people may not decide to put their flashers on, at least under that system, it'll be easy for the enforcement authorities, like Mr. Jocelyn, to give a, you know, very solid, credible, uh, unambiguous review of that. Because um, that's going to be the way for people to determine, or I'm sorry, for, for someone like Sam to determine um, these trips. And so anytime a car goes by and it has dogs in it, and they're not putting on the flashers, that's going to be a problem. Um, if, you know, if it's determined that they're going to Jenny's, which I'm not even certain that a lot of these logs can even determine definitively where the, where the cars have gone, so. I don't know if that answers your question, but.
Anyone else like to address the board?
Thank you.
Come on up.
One more quick question that came to mind while we were talking. Um, I guess the policing is the big question. So the special permit was granted last year. Whose role is it to police? I'm hearing, it's not the board, it's not the plan, it's, who is responsible for policing and making sure that the rules are enforced? That's the big question. So moving forward, rules possibly, can't say for sure, but highly probable that some rules have been broken. There's remediation in process. So coming out of the gate, due diligence to make sure that things were in place, that people didn't drive fast down the road, that things went on, on a positive note versus fixing it as we go along. So I guess, moving forward, looking at the future, again, we've, we spent the last year trying to figure out who's going to enforce. Is it the Woodverse that have a camera? Is it Sam Jocelyn? When and how can we get enforcement of this? That's my question.
Thank you. Any other comments to the board this time?
How, how will we get answers?
So what we're doing today is we're collecting information.
It's been a long time, how will we get answers?
So, thanks, thanks.
Please.
So we're, we're in the process, this is a, this is, this is a, this is a hearing for a special permit. Uh, we're just taking information from individuals. Are there any other individuals that would like to give us information?
One last thing.
Sure, new information? Come on up, please.
I'm getting tired, I want to go home. Okay.
I have new information.
I'd like to close my part of it. The Lenway Downfall Group, just by saying, do your job, remember these three things. Compliance, compliance, compliance. That's all we ask.
I just have a question as the process, Mr. Chairman. Is, is this a question that, I don't know what the board's pleasure is with regard to what it intends to.
Well, I think what we're currently doing at this point in time, if the board is comfortable, if you'd like to continue this hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, so we need to continue this hearing. Um, so let's pick a date that we can continue to monitor, please.
You don't want to leave this.
Yeah, I didn't get into that, huh?
Oh, yeah, well, that's true.
Folks, if we could just, if we could just keep it down for just a couple minutes, because we're still, we're still in session here with this, uh, with this hearing. Thank you, John.
So the twelfth is the town meeting, or is it the town meeting?
Well, that's not a public hearing, so that's. No, I know that.
So, next year on the date, I'm going to be available the twentieth.
As am I.
Right. So that puts us down to Thanksgiving Eve, I think, or just the twenty-seventh, or something.
No, I'm not there.
Is that correct?
Folks, again, please, just, we're just trying to do our business here.
Yeah, I mean, that's our record. Right now, it's probably okay, but.
Let's go for now, because now. Is that what day does it? Um, I entertain a motion to continue this public hearing to the fourth of December at seven fifteen?
Seven?
Seven fifteen? Second?
Sounds, okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, thank you, everyone. We'll be continuing this on the fourth of December at seven fifteen. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're just going to continue?
Yeah, people hire you.
So folks, we're going to continue our, our meeting here. So if you'd like to have conversations, please take them out to the hallway. Thanks very much. Okay, so we're going to continue with our whole business. I'd like to continue with our whole business. Plenary subdivision, Plan for sixty-eight, Green Street. Owner, applicant, Green Street Realty Trust, Ula Jackman trustee, uh, which is a chapter sixty-one A land notice of intent to sell. Oh, no, I'm sorry. I'm just kidding, sorry, I'm, I'm advancing. Um, do we have any further information to discuss with this?
Um, not too much. I've been contacted by, uh, by the engineer, Eric O'Conner, from Millennium. And I understand that there are a few tweaks being done to the plan. Um, the board has forty-five days to, with which to make a decision on that. And I think, um, I think what's going to be actually also covered at the November thirteenth. But um, Eric said he was going to talk with you all about getting an extension of that forty-five days.
Mm-hmm.
So, um.
That would be helpful.
Yeah, I think that, that would be helpful.
Yeah, especially if they make the changes to the plan.
But I haven't, I haven't received anything, anything new.
Have you spoke with the highway department?
Um, I have, I have not. I've, um, I distributed it to the various town departments. Um, I think the primary concern really is having the fire chief look at it in terms of the waivers.
I've spoken to both of them.
Okay.
I'm not the, not the chief, but the lieutenant who does all that.
Yeah, okay.
And uh, yeah, he, he has some concerns, and we're going to abide by what he does.
Okay.
One thing he doesn't want is a siskin. He'd rather see sprinkles in the house. And I said, well, why? And he said, because when we get there, the fire is already out. Because they get sprinkles in the house. And that was one of his concerns. The other concern was, with the long driveway, uh, they wanted twenty feet wide uh, for, for fire apparatus. Uh, another concern with his was the cul-de-sac uh, not being uh, the full uh, size. And I think that can be taken care of myself. I, I can't speak for Eric, but I think it can be taken care of. And uh, as far as the superintendent, the director of the highway department, uh, he's familiar with the site. And uh, the drainage used to go from about fifty feet behind the barn. The barn is three hundred feet off the road. So it would be, the drainage used to go from three hundred and fifty feet all the way to the road. And with the company swale that we're proposing, uh, it'd be about a hundred and twenty-five feet off of the, off of the road. All that water will be directed out to the back of the property. So there would only be the hundred and twenty-five feet, which is a sizable um, uh, area that is not going to go into the road anymore. Uh, there was a drainage, a drainage pipe beside the driveway uh, that goes across the street to a swale that goes out to another swale that circles around to the back of the property. Uh, and, and he thought that would be a good idea to put it in there. There is a small detention area, or retention area, uh, where, where that cul-de-pipe goes across the street. Uh, but there was that area that we could put more in, if, we could put another one in on the other side of the driveway, if, if, if it's necessary. There would have to be a catch face, and of course, at the end of the driveway.
And I understand also that, um, there was some discussion with Mr. Andrews about access to the barn that's on his property now.
Uh, I am talking with Mr. Andrews about that. As long as he cleans up this side of the barn and paints the barn. I, I don't have a problem with that. You know, and I really don't have a problem doing anything that anybody wants within reason. Well, I don't, she does.
Martha, do you have any other questions or concerns?
I don't, I don't think so. I will be touching base with, with, you know, fire and, and James to get their comments directly. Um, I've asked for them to be back, I think, by November seventh, but, um.
No, I'm meeting with Eric there on Friday during the rainstorm.
Okay.
Because he wants to see what it's going to look like with the downpours. Uh, we, we scheduled a couple meetings, but we didn't have a downpour at the right time, so we, we put them on.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Appreciate it very much.
Any anticipated dates? Just something like that.
On the fourth, I think, is on?
Yeah.
That is, uh.
That would be, I mean, we're going to have to look at every.
Just because. He, he gave me a date, but I forgot what it was.
So I'll touch, I'll touch base with, with him.
Okay.
But I think that, um, that would be helpful.
Okay.
To get extensions. So I'll look at the calendar and coordinate with the board and with Eric and try to find a, a date that's.
Okay.
Reasonable.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for sticking around, appreciate it. Um, chapter sixteen, land notice of intent to sell, do you have anything to add?
Um, this is only if, um, the board had any comments.
One way?
The period on that is, is scheduled for December tenth. Um, I did get, um, comments from the Conservation Commission today, but that's the only, only body that I've heard from so far. So, you know, we, we should discuss it, or the board should discuss it to see what comments we want to give to the selectmen of the year.
And what was like this?
I mean, it'll probably back and forth at the latest.
Okay. Uh, any new business? I see a big and done next to me.
Yeah, I think, uh, given tonight's agenda, none is, probably, thing to do.
And I hope you have a very.
I think we can skip the calendar next report.
Do we have any liaising reports that have anything of significance that should be disclosed tonight?
Just very briefly, uh, last zoning, uh, board meeting, uh, the board raised the issue of addressing the definitions of how we calculate, uh, mean roof height, um, when it is a roof deck, which, you know, is a reason. You've heard that before, George?
Uh, many times.
Yeah. Um, and, uh, anyway, I invited them, I informed them of our workshop on Monday, you know, you know, for zoning changes, and invited them, added to, to, uh, give me some proposed language for, um, if they wanted to attend, they could attend. But I haven't received anything beyond that. But they might show up Monday.
To confirm, we have a zoning workshop month, uh, this Monday?
At one o'clock.
At one o'clock.
Just so everybody has that on their calendar.
And I have posted that as a meeting.
Okay, excellent. Beautiful. Um, I would welcome a motion to adjourn.
I wouldn't move to adjourn.
Any second to that.
Second.
All righty, discussion, good. Thanks, everybody?
Aye.